So at least.
Hello.
Hello.
Anthony?
Yes.
Ah, me. I'm Sophia. Oh, nice meeting you.
Hello.
It was...
Lots of conversations.
Yeah, thank you so much for making it happen.
Yeah, I know.
The parking lot is so quiet, I doubt I'm glad we did it.
Yeah, I know.
We had to make this stuff happen.
So, it's, they're starting with a closed session, the room, and then they'll be over here. I mean, it starts pretty much on time, so.
Oh, okay.
They'll, they'll pretty much get started at seven. So typically, if you just want to see, they'll have the, um, Brian, come to the rest council here. This is where we sit right now.
So Brian is going to stand there.
Mm-hmm. Well, so this is our just, you know, they, we rent this out for the weddings and stuff. But because our other, our civic center has been torn down, we're building a new civic center. It's almost eight years old, this is where we're at.
Okay, beautiful. So I make outside and I come in after.
Sure. You too, and you, and if you want, you're welcome, waiting here to chill.
Thank you, I have one, I don't have time to get, so I don't want to bother you.
Oh, no worries. Alright, well, we'll see you soon.
Thank you so much.
Alright.
Anthony, you want to go over to the floor?
Um, I'll, I'll close it a bit so that people don't get too chilly, thanks.
Yeah, he's in the restroom. Is there a restroom?
That was just to your left there.
Then you score. I'll, I'll be right back.
Oh, we're, we're, we like. So don't feel obligated to stay longer than your presentation.
We won't.
Okay. It's gonna be a long meeting. Tonight?
Will Brian be presenting from this podium? So I'll sit here because I've got a video tape here. So maybe you, you know, whatever. Oh, good, good. I have feeling Julia won't find this as tough. Oh my goodness.
Oh my god, you're so kind.
We give our council a little candy to charge them up. Yeah, for sure.
Anthony, would they ask any questions or?
It's not that likely, but, um, it may. Luminaries might become.
He wouldn't like him. He's a good speaker.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're all pretty charismatic, so it will be, they won't really like it, too.
It'd be fun. Anthony, you're all so thoughtful.
No, that's the thing. Well, you have the weight of a woman's heart.
You guys need to talk tomorrow, right?
Like you can leave early, here's some chocolate.
Yeah. Here's your walk-in closet next.
Be careful, I'm never gonna leave.
Right.
I, I'm gonna call Julia because I want to be free, she's lost. Oh, oh, thank you. Hi, I just wanted to check in a few minutes, I'm a little bit confused. Okay, that's probably it, it's really dark. Okay. Yes, yes, yes. Just keep going back, just keep going back, and you're gonna, like, it'll, I think it has a sign for the main house, go past the main house. And you'll start to see, uh, uh, one-story building with the room lit up, and you'll probably see the flat. So Gaila and I are inside, but it's, just keep going back. It's, it... Yeah, yeah, I, I had a hard time finding it. Yeah. Just keep, I, I might even see your headlights, so I'll come out. Is it, does that Christmas lights on it? Okay. Alright, we'll see you in a minute. Hi, have you been here before? Okay, it's confusing. Yeah, you gotta go past the main house. It, it's like, you gotta just keep following the driveway, it, it's not lit, so it's very confusing, and there's not signage, but... Yep? Okay, just keep going back in the parking lot, just keep heading past... Yeah, you'll see like a, a house with Christmas lights, you wanna pass that. It's, no, you're probably in the right direction, you're way back there. Keep going, keep, it's very confusing. Yeah.
Well, hello everybody. Hi, how are you? Good to see you. Thanks for being here tonight. Oh, it's alright.
It was had chocolate, caramel, it was delicious. Yeah, I haven't seen it yet, I really want to see it.
It's like he's gonna stand over here.
Yeah, I was thinking I would sit here and watch you. Absolutely.
Listen, it all ended, this is our studio.
Hi, how are you? Don't worry. Oh my gosh, yeah, so, what's that? Tonight, our council does the reorganization.
Yeah, Brian.
Good to meet you, you're welcome. And, uh, we're also saying say my name to our city attorney, who's retiring.
So a lot of change.
They do a reorg every year, I mean, I don't know.
Every year, whether they, whether they need to or not, huh?
Well, yeah, so it's, in a lot of cities that, um, don't have their at-large election for the mayor. They have a reorg annually where the mayor and vice-mayor serve a full one-year term, but, so, our council does that. And we're coming to do an nomination, so it's typically based on a competition. Yep, no? It's also. There you go. Excellent. Well, so, yeah, you'll be at the podium, um... Typically, three presentations like this, and then not getting, staring at you one way or the other. But there are five, there's twenty-nine minutes, hopefully they have a couple of questions where you, yeah, so that will advance your team. So they've got a set of your PowerPoint here, and you're sitting there. The others, yeah, perfect. You can have one of your folks do it if you'd rather. No, no, I don't want to, I don't want to, they might all turn it on when it comes time, the battery just, it just runs down.
Just make sure that you have a fresh battery.
Yeah, I should just double-check our batteries, so. It's not random, it should get you through your.
Right, Jen, Jen Hinton, um, just said that, she, do you want to come, what she's coming from, in the...
Yeah, I think she, she sent her earlier.
Yeah, I, I told her that. She's actually confused, yeah, she just, just a whole surprise.
How are things today?
It's weird, yesterday was bad for me, today's not been great, not as bad as yesterday. What's, you need more of?
Like a beer or something, or, I don't know. Well, she's very confused. I hope you want to go, Gail would be, she is a, yeah, she could even, she's in the position now.
I'm glad you had me on there.
But, but tell her, I know how she is, yeah.
It's, it's, it's pretty, she said it's dark. It's very dark.
I'm tired, thing.
That's what Gail said, she's.
I asked the first entrance, and it's like, huh, I don't have a tent, but I look like, you know? It's beautiful. I wish we could see in the daylight. Do they have these nice, old? Ah, okay. They have those cute buildings, you know? So they do, okay.
Oh, because they're gonna, it's like a mayor. Not that, you're probably right.
Yes, yes, he's got, he's got a few, where he's.
But I wanted, I need to have, I might even stand over here.
Oh, great.
Yeah, did you see, he liked, uh, he liked.
I'm Kevin Moore.
Hi.
Hello.
How's everybody doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I'm such a sugar high mom.
I'm Steve.
Hi.
What's up?
Yeah, Julia, I'm from Cape Cap.
Oh, Brian, how are you? Cape Cap is?
It is a nonprofit, we're turning a hundred years old.
Oh.
Next step in January.
How are you?
Very well.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, this is Sarah.
We're all at the same.
Yes, yeah.
Alright.
Well, you roll deep.
We're, we're, we're pretty large, we've got, I don't know, thirteen, or so locations, all of them live, the peninsula. Have you heard of Liberties United?
Great, so good report.
What are you saying? Our, our impact, our community.
That's great.
And our vision, you know? Hundred years ahead, we've got, you know, a lot of history.
Yeah, that's cool, we actually hear the story.
Are you here to, you're gonna keep things under control?
Yeah, I'm, uh, it's, we are all here. Our staff, our teams, and for the security.
Of course, yes, yes. Well, I wish I could have seen this straight through the, in daylight, and have not been here before.
It's beautiful, it's a twenty-two acre park, it was given to the city by, uh, the resident of the estate at the time, we have a whole working farm. In other words, how actually in here in the park is, town owns a house here.
What?
So maybe two, but my wife and I did another park, otherwise, I don't know, we were.
You're kidding.
We'll live around here, it's crazy. I'm, uh, I'm originally from Seattle, but down there about two and a half years.
How fortunate.
Oh, yeah, I feel like carrying.
Wow.
Residents often tell me how lucky I am, New Year, it's like, I know.
Get a little reminder, yep, yep. It's the new twenty-two acre park, that, that is tremendous.
Yeah, and it's really original, it's, it's one of the nicest parks in the area, so we get more often residents, non-residents, telling me.
Oh, sure.
We have a lot of events, weddings, other weddings. There's a baseball game, we, I think that's where they made, he lives in town.
Ah.
So it's pretty much fuel. Yeah, oh, that's true.
Does it have like a pond, or do you have water features?
No.
No. It's always like a good place, a pond.
Don't have that.
Don't have it. Twenty-two acres, all the space is.
Yeah.
The city council.
Yeah, they should, they should shortly.
If you get any listening podcasts, good luck.
This is their county attorney, welcome county attorney. County attorney, county attorney for like one more hour, two more hours, he's retiring.
So you're already on this.
The informer's your attorney.
I have the city attorney for town. There is no county attorney.
That's right.
Some cities, some towns have county attorney.
Who are you?
Yeah.
So I have this one, this one, we, uh.
Yeah.
Oh, you?
Yeah.
I'm running. Go up there, all the kids different schedules. So, nobody use them up or?
No, I'm not.
So we're not, okay, but today I get an older lady over and do some holiday baby. Yes, or.
I have, when I was a kid, when we were going down to visit my, my wife, I saw this dude down there. Yeah, we try to do this.
I know.
So why don't we help you members here tonight?
Okay, keep coming back.
Right. Listen, it's nice for us to have somebody here, especially when it's cold and wet.
I do, that's how.
Yeah. True, they all did that.
Oh, okay.
I thought the video turned out way better than I expected. Are you guys here?
No. I'm not past it.
I'm sure. Yeah. They're, they're making some edits, but. Asked to go back and do a. No, there's. Pretty good. I think this was something from my uncle. Carol told me last night. Is there a card to fill out here for? Believe me, just.
Yeah. Cause I want to do.
No, but, uh, can take your information, John?
Yes. Hang out for an hour or two or whatever.
Oh yeah, I'm honestly, I would say in a five, five minutes mark. If you, if you really want, I could shoot you a text.
I, I got nothing else going on.
I got you. And there's no bars in the effort. That's seriously.
Cheers.
You see Teresa?
Is there a question?
Well, um, Lisa, doesn't, um, Lisa or someone else?
Not for a while.
Stephanie?
I think Stephanie, Stephanie likes to do hers with the chair.
Okay.
I can go up there, just first, two spots.
Chief has nothing on her.
He's served.
He's been there since.
Oh, he's, he's got his. Yeah.
That's true.
Go over there, who cares? I just didn't know if, if, uh, what do you call it? It's gonna be, I'm gonna check in here. This is gonna be a. So after there, did you attorney open session decision, you got the phone this cell phone?
Uh.
What, you texted her?
I think I did, yeah. No, you know what, I was emailing with her and she was on it from.
Okay, well, do you, uh, well email her that? Congratulations. Uh, and then, I let her know that Bill Connors will be in touch with her immediately tomorrow to begin working out of contract. And hopefully she'll be on board. Watch out for her.
Okay, alright. I, I'm gonna copy you on that email. Hey, it's fun, good to see you, man. How's it going? This one is nothing for you.
What?
This one is nothing for you.
Yeah, now, this is.
This is. I was, you know, I was just talking with a friend, he's like, I just love this place, and I'm like, you know what, I love, if I really wanted to, I could have.
Yeah. Like everyone bundled up in like, uh, Lego gear, like puppy jackets, I'm just like, oh, cute.
For the, uh, I know, I know, I even dusted off the blazer. Oh, yeah, nothing but the finest.
Oh, I got, uh, I emailed you, sent to your friend.
Oh, cool, cool, cool.
So I, uh, I'm sure when she gets busy, or when she gets free.
I'll shoot her a text, I know right now she's on the east coast, but she's, she's got time. Um, she's been doing it for a while. I just found out another friend of mine might be in the day area, integrated.
Okay.
Integrated, she was with Matt Dyo.
The same area?
Well, market.
Yeah. Might shout there, because pretending to have tails.
Hopefully.
Yeah, I'm also, I think.
Oh, sure. And the local president, he always had the best. You know, put it on Twitter, it's known.
How's it going, looks like we have the whole, how you doing, chief? Yeah?
Yeah? We got a nice cake. Uh.
Keep the proxy on your desk.
Okay.
No, it's either Rishin or what happened. I, I took two years trying to fix things. Finally, it was just, either the litter is gonna be slower than you to recover than you do. Correct.
So maybe you can trial therapy.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, I have a, I have a, um, device. The, the real magic is none of the design. You have to, you have to take a nice big niche, wrap yourself. Cause you want to, yes, you know, wrap against your shirt, you want to wrap there, or else you don't.
They say you have to notice.
I, I, I use it, you know, for several, I'm gonna tell you.
Okay. So. Let the call of order, our December eighteenth, uh, council meeting. Ring of procession of that, let's start with the pledge of the flag. Let me do.
Pledge of the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anthony, cause we have.
Council member Lemperis. Lewis.
Here.
Weist. Vice Mayor Degolia.
Here.
And Mayor Whitman.
There. Okay, um, first off, we have a presentation to Gatecap. For I am here, okay.
Thank you. Uh, so thanks for having me, I've been, I've been, uh.
So I just see about Gatecap, what a ninety-nine year old organization. Uh, their employees serving roughly fifteen hundred people every single day here on the peninsula. Jenna, you want to introduce it by yourself?
Hi, everyone, I'm Jenna. I receive independent living services and required services in Gatecap. And back in thousand eight, I had the honor of receiving the real popular award for working above and beyond for different offerings. Stores and just improving my work skills enough to get my own job now at Whole Foods. And I feel very fortunate to have been at Gatecap for a long time and. It's, it's a amazing environment for people with disabilities to want to give a job out in the community. So we feel capable to, so that we can do a lot of, thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Uh, you know, could say anything better. So I'll give you a little bit of our background, that's really, that is words of our, what our mission is about. So I'll give you a little bit of our background, that's really, that doesn't work with our, with our mission as well. And the wonderful folks we get to work with every day. So again, we're ninety-nine years old, we turn a hundred next year, which is a pretty remarkable achievement. Uh, I mentioned about 300 employees, twenty-two million in revenue, this is one of the largest providers of services in San Antonio, San Francisco. Uh, thirteen locations, two counties, as I mentioned, about twelve thousand families are served every single year, roughly twelve hundred every single, uh, fourth day. Uh, our mission is a lifespan of service, as we start with our intervention, therapeutic services, we run three inclusive preschools. We then go into, uh, college path, we have learning campuses, community access, independent living, and Jenna mentioned also employment services, and Jenna, uh, was just promoted at Whole Foods every week. All right, our mission and values, our, our role timeline is about to move, our whole focus is on inclusion and immunity. I have the good fortune of working for nearly thirty years at a local tech company, there was inclusive work environment with about twelve hundred employees. And since twenty-eight, uh, four years ago, being able to reach out to other employers and wherever we can, making sure that inclusion is part of every campus, every opportunity we provide. Because everyone benefits by that kind of setting. Whoa, I went too fast on that. Uh, of our community connections, so, uh, some of the work that we do right nearby, as we've been partnering with Menlo College, uh, over the years, with volunteer and employment for, like I said, many decades. Uh, we have a special needs family appreciation game on Stanford, this has come away, that our fourth annual event, and this is really meant to be for families to celebrate, special needs families to recognize them. Uh, we started off with about two hundred people, we had over four hundred people last year, and about a hundred lucky folks get to go and feel the half hundred welcome from the back. We launched our inaugural sort on ballet, uh, five K, uh, three K walk run gold, uh, last spring, we have our second one this twenty year. Again, a little bit of the Stanford connection, we have Stanford, uh, cheer squad, the band, and a circle of Stanford trees joined us for the event, so it's always a fun time, we love to have you out there. And again, we have a lot of, uh, local, community partners, and I'll show you a little slide here of some of those in, in all of the, you know, colleges I mentioned, Whole Foods, Sager Heart Prep, uh, Stanford, Target, Twitter, so a lot of local employers helping our mission. So some things just to make everyone aware of, uh, areas where we can have, we engage in ensuring our success and the success for other nonprofits, is wherever we can, we need to improve the, uh, client and workforce housing options, uh, here in the Bay Area. We know that's a huge challenge, certainly, folks that we serve are impacted more than others in terms of, uh, limited housing options. Employment opportunities, volunteer events, access to facilities, open news programs, community engagement, voluntary events, uh, helping support with state, local funding. California, I hate to tell you, is fifty out of fifty states per capita funding for the services we provide. I'm on the road a lot raising funds because we can't provide the services we do if I'm not out fund me. So things like city grants make a big difference in our ability to provide programs. So a lot of people don't know that, but I want to make you aware of it, so however possible, if you do have employment grants, community grants, supporting programs, they make a huge difference for our ability to carry out our mission. Uh, voter accessibility for our clients, it's one of the big things we're working on, election is just around the corner, and last but not least, improve transportation options, folks can get to home work and to and from programs. So wherever you scout companies on that, please, uh, let us know, we're happy to help advocate for that or provide information. We celebrate our hundredth anniversary coming up on May fourteenth, Henry Winkler is our MC, and Dr. Temple Mannan is going to be our keynote speaker. As Jenna mentioned, she was the Neil Poplin Award winner, uh, we celebrated an individual our recent year that really exemplifies hard work and commitment and dedication, and Jenna certainly does that in, in every way that she can, and, uh, is proven that with her work at, uh, Whole Foods. So again, May fourteenth, mark your calendars, if I had a square reader for your credit card, I'd take it right down. And we'll do that for future meetings, and that is a little bit about us. So I appreciate your time for letting us share our story with you, and, uh, for being part of our mission, uh, right here in the African area, so, thank you very, very much. Jenna, thank you. If you guys have any questions, if anybody has any before, turning over the mic, this is not, Mike and I didn't want to hang onto this. So any questions for Ryan?
Where, where, Brian, where is your local office?
We have, uh, a local office in Palo Alto, is, uh, that way, we have East Palo Alto, and we have Redwood City is sort of the three closest, but our community access programs are in the community all the time. So they could be right here for a week, we could be going to another venue for another activity, volunteer event next week, right down to Menlo Park, so a lot of that is being in the community active, we actually have a lot of volunteer events for the folks in our programs to go go and help sort clothing and food out of places like Samaritan House, you may have heard of, so we have, we're, we're everywhere all the time with the offices nearby, or those three right here. Any other questions? Comments? Any comments from the audience? Questions? Okay, all right, thank you so much, keep your company. Thank you. Okay, um, we have temples, um, presentations, so our first presentation proclamation, uh, will be for, uh, Jen Larson.
Oh?
You have to come up.
I thought that was a let's make the field.
All right. Okay, so, and after, I'm not going to stay out here.
Okay.
And then, we, we won the pro, uh, proclamation, and then we have one more presentation, but anyway. So this is recognition of Jennifer Jen Larson, whereas Jennifer started providing legal services to us here in Atherton in two thousand twelve, committing well over seven years of serving as the assistant city attorney for the town of Atherton. And whereas during her tenure, Jen participated in contract negotiations, served as the primary legal counsel to the planning commission, and led various town trainings, including Brown Act training, and in, to incoming committee division members. And whereas, a few of whereas, whereas the number of council members, a number of council members have commented often about her concisiveness and clarity in her, in her attitude. All right, and whereas Jen has an outstanding attitude coupled with an exceptional, with exceptional legal knowledge, town staff and residents have remarked at the pleasure that they've had in working with Jen, and they've commented on her talents and communicating complex content, uh, that is very easy for them to understand and then read as you get along. And whereas the town of Atherton has been fortunate to have services, Ms. Larson, her insight, demeanor, and quality of work will be missed, and whereas, most recently, Jen has provided legal guidance on several dominant topics before the council and the planning commission, including the heritage tree and landscape screening ordinances. Jen joined the legal department as an opportunity to work with her father, Bill Connors, and we are certain it has been a remarkable experience for the two of them, as it has been for the town, and it's tremendously benefited us in the town. And so therefore, as mayor of the town of Atherton, and on behalf of the city council, I'd like to thank Jen for her service to the town of Atherton, and we wish her the best.
I didn't want to say Jen, Jen, you have really benefited the town with work on so many different things, like, I mean, the one that I feel the most connected to is so much time is the heritage tree or thing, but you poured yourself into it in different ways.
All right, this one's a shorter one. This proclamation is recognition of William Bill Connors, and whereas Bill Connors has served as the city attorney since two thousand eleven, dedicating eight years of providing valuable legal counsel, representing the town of Atherton. And whereas Bill has brought his wealth of experience and municipal legal expertise from the city of Monterey, where he served as assistant city attorney and city attorney for over twenty years, leading to his operating with a keen eye and a focus on the bottom line. And whereas Bill was quoted when he first accepted the role as saying, "I can do the job expertly, but not as expensively as a larger firm." And whereas, he provides guidance across the entirety of the organization, including review of ultimate agreements, drafting, and review of town ordinances, and representing the town in various instances. He's become a committed member of the leadership team, providing legal guidance, and that has helped, helped Atherton thrive through, through the benefit of his thoroughness and his candor, in which he served the town and working with the town staff, the council, and the residents as well. And whereas Bill will be fondly remembered for his love of diet code, that continued even once the council transitioned, went through the transition process and required him to walk over to Asheville Road in here to satisfy his thirst. And whereas Bill has never backed out from the challenge, and has not heard topics he didn't have a opinion on or a story about. Now therefore, as the mayor of the town of Atherton, on behalf of the Atherton City Council, I'd like to thank Bill for his great service to the town of Atherton, and wish him the best as he retires, and many successful years ahead, thank you. Now.
The, the green jacket.
It was.
Yes.
This is, uh, dress like him to Masters, okay, these guys were the winners, and we found out that we were remiss in not offering town jackets to our great degrees, and so, we have to, I put these on for you, they have everything, okay? And so we like to first your two fours, all right, so you just, you just came in on the eighteen green, you just sunk the putt, all right? Yay! So, here we go.
It's a, it's a dark green.
It's a dark green.
He's got covers of Masters.
Jen's the recipe looks good. You're interchangeable.
And, you know, Anthony has this ability that makes everything fun.
What did I do now?
Okay. Um, okay. Okay, so before I, do you want to declare the seats open before I make my statement? So, so, you want some of the mayor's vice mayor? You got any office, Lee? No, please. I don't have a chair, no, I don't have a chair, okay. Okay, uh, so, every year for those of you, this is one of your first meetings, uh, the outgoing mayor gets a chance to spend some time reminiscing, and the incoming mayor gets a brief time to say what he's going to get done. Uh, and so, first off, uh, I'd like to thank, you know, spend a big thank you to the council for, for the honor of serving as mayor this year, I appreciate the, um, and the opportunity to work with you on so many tasks, and be more involved with our residents, and also get to work with our great staff. This opportunity has allowed me to work very, very closely with our city manager and get to know him a lot better, and I appreciate the work that he and his staff do for our residents every day. Truly think that our staff, including our contract team, is just around, is serving our residents, keeping our streets, uh, and park looking great, and keeping our community safe. That is a testament not only to our city staff and the city manager and the leadership he provides, but also a testament to the confidence that the council has on them, and, which I think is only representative of the, of the collegial, uh, relationship that we've developed over the last few years. I think that really the, the situation of working with each and every one of the council members, really from my perspective, has just been terrific, and, and I do appreciate, uh, everybody working together so well, and hopefully, you are the same. So, bottom line is, what did we get done? Well, in a, in a short word, lots. I asked the city manager for his list, and I'll tell you, it was over four pages long, however, mine is a lot shorter, and so this won't take too long. But looking back, here's what I recognized as the key parts of our extraordinary year. First and foremost, was our civic center project. And, you know, we, as you know, we've had several council members here, our vice mayor and councilwoman Louis, who have worked very, very hard over the last number of years, working with the civic center advisory committee, and doing the design, and then bringing it to all of us here, where we refined it together and got things going. We accomplished the initiation of our project with the shovel on the ground on the twenty-third of April, we took all those pictures, I've never seen one of them before, but, like. Hopefully we're going to see them someday. Yeah. With a large community gathering, and several shovel on the ground, and throwing dirt, and all those things that, that we had to do, we never got a chance to see the photos. But of course, that couldn't have been done if, if we had not awarded the town's largest ever construction contract, which is almost fifty million dollars. Our old ci- city center building was cut in half, and we relocated the administration's offices and operations over here with minimal disruptions while leaving PD in place with no interruption. If you haven't been over there, you should go over and see the half building, uh, and all the work that's going on there. We also approved the financing plan covering our cash flow needs that we're going to need to, to complete the project, not that we don't have the money in the long run, but we have cash flow issues that are hitting up with the timing of the invoices. And so at the last meeting, we gave George some direction on how we wanted to go and how much we'd be willing to finance if things don't change. We've had three community meetings hosted by the police with between eighty and two hundred residents attending. The first one was responding to the uptake in the burglaries that, that had happened around here and up and down the peninsula, and then the two latter, two latter ones were about the status of where we are with the investigations, what's going on, and lots of discussion on how they can keep themselves and their homes safe. We finalized a new four-year agreement with the APOA, which was a big thing. For me, a big thing was, we finalized the Middlefield Pike Corridor, that was That was completed, although it was just completed yesterday because I saw them putting the big bike boxes down. But it's all operational and it's a great looking street. We established multiple subcommittees covering a number of regional coordination issues such as SP fifty, what should we do with regards to advising Caltrain on our train station, providing our input on Stanford Development to San Clara County, and also one for the fire district discussions. Speaking of the fire district, we held a joint meeting with the fire board back in January to discuss and get consensus on what we have in our, in our study as to what might be reasonable numbers. We took their input. The subcommittee then was asked to go ahead and have some conversations about the inequity with the fire district, which is one of the things that we'll talk about today in one of our agenda items. And we've talked about the, what potential remedies might come out of that. Uh, we reviewed the situation also with Anna Eshu and she shared her experiences with the fire district with us. As late as today, I had a conversation about that with Senator Jerry Hill as well when he called me. And we met with LAFCO to learn what the processes would be and what our options are if we were to move forward in one way or another. We said goodbye to two long-term employees, actually three, Jen and Jennifer who were here today, but also Theresa De La Santos. But we also welcomed the new city deputy, deputy city manager, Anthony Subaru sitting in the back, uh, who hit the ground running and was pushed forward and moving forward in our outreach activities uh, on behalf of the city council, telling the community what we just passed and what the committees have just passed, which was a new addition, as well as updating our regular newsletters. We held some initial joint meetings. Our very initial joint meeting with Menlo Park, looking to boost community involvement. We hosted a successful concert series and movies in the park and we had our most successful national night out with the help of not only city staff, but our partner Interwest. We also hosted our very innovative holiday lighting ceremony where we beautifully lit up the historic water tower in the park, which was celebrated with carolers, Santa and gingerbread house construction. We updated the heritage tree ordinances to help further protect our trees, including the neighbors' trees, which is something that's going to be a staff report on later today. We completed our traffic flow analysis, which will serve as a baseline for responding to future EIRs. We updated the time limit construction on projects, which hopefully will incentivize construction activity and those projects to complete on a more timely basis. We initiated CEQA activities for the water capture facility at Carton Field and we chose to go forward with that. We initiated a study on leaf blowers just last month uh, and looked to eliminate, and we did pass a resolution to eliminate the cell roundup in public places. We finalized the recology franchise agreement for the trash waste pickup and we began a competitive analysis on that. We provided feedback to the state legislature from our area on SP fifty as well as the cash initiatives. We updated our goals as we do annually or semiannually. And we continually improved our outreach to the community with improvements to our website. And while there's much, much more, I will not take any more of your time. So I thank you. At one time, I think it was Kerry asked, "How was your year as the mayor?" And I responded to him, "I thought it was a blast. I really enjoyed it and I enjoyed working more closely with everybody as well as with staff, as I said. Uh, and I appreciate the opportunity and the honor that you all have given me, so thank you very much." And with that, I shall conclude. When he said that, I was going to, you know, I was chairs making. So, now we can begin to accept obligations. Yeah, I'd like to start and I think I've worked with Rick for a number of years, both as the former mayor and this year as the vice mayor working with me. Uh, and I think that the city would be, um, wouldn't be better served with anybody other than the mayor. Any nominations?
Well, I'm not a tough guy. Am I like, hi or?
Hi.
Hi.
I, just to finish the two, I. I'd like to nominate the council member.
Any others? Hey? Please.
I.
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 I've been very proud.
I.
Don't make an exception.
Just not my right.
So, I will state your name.
I will.
Rick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
That I am domestic.
Foreign.
That I will bear truthfully.
And I will bear truth.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
Duties upon which I am about to.
Okay. So, yeah, so, um, I'll make a brief statement and then we'll have cake to celebrate the seven years of Bill and Jen's service to the town. You're taking hours. Sixty hours. You've been on the council twenty-four years. You said twenty-four years and seven months.
That's not a doubt.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, um, I want to thank the council for electing me as mayor. It's a genuine honor to represent the town of Atherton and all of our residents. Uh, you know that I put a lot into this and this is really a big part of my life and I thank you for continuing that honor. I want to thank Bill for what I consider to be the outstanding job that he has done as mayor this year. And that really isn't just words. I really think that you excel. Um, you exceeded my expectation. You set a standard for the council that's going to be argued equal. I really think you did a great job. Uh, and also, I want to thank the other members of the council for your continued service to the town. This is the most consuming, time-consuming volunteer work that I've ever done and I know it's probably true for each of you. We have an extremely collaborative council and it's an honor to serve with all of you. I also want to thank George Rodriguez, our city manager, who has done an outstanding job. He's extremely experienced. I sometimes come up against his hard lines because he's very focused on his job and I tend to be a little more focused on the strategy and the way that it applies to people. But he is really a great city manager and it's a pleasure to work with. I feel the same way about the town staff. I think we have a really excellent staff. Why this little town has such a good staff? And I have to give credit to the city manager for where we are where we are, but we have a really good staff. You guys are exceptional. Finally, I want to extend a special thanks to the residents who worked so hard on our multiple committees that give advice to the council. Uh, you may not always follow each of your recommendations, but we know that you are extremely committed to this town and we couldn't do our job without the support that you provide to us. Actually, that wasn't my final thanks. I guess my final thanks really goes to my wife, who has constantly been my best supporter and who I wouldn't literally have been here tonight without her. Okay, I'm going to make just a few comments about my priorities for the next year. Um, but I want to be clear that in the words of Kerry Wees, I'll be brief. Thank you. Uh, so, uh, I just want to start by saying that I believe in transparency and responsiveness. To me, these are the binds that tie us to be representatives and the best representatives that we can be. We have to be focused on transparency and responsiveness and I am committing to responding to every contact that I get from any Atherton resident right away. And I do that. And I am going to set up weekly office hours on Tuesdays from noon to one where any resident may not invite me, but I am coming out of there and I'll be there. So, my first priority is to continue to maximize the safety of Atherton residents and support our police department. I will do this by supporting the deployment of automated license plate readers and other protective technology. While we improve the authorizing ordinances to protect the privacy of our residents, it's important that we practice best practices within the safety community and I think that our department does that. Second, I think it is absolutely our job to continue to prioritize conservative fiscal management and in particular to closely monitor the town center project to ensure that it continues to remain on time and on budget. This is our job. This is the biggest project that we've ever done in Atherton by an order of magnitude and we're very focused on it. I hope during this year that we're going to see that we can raise several million dollars of additional donations so that we can avoid borrowing to support the completion of that project. But we are going to complete that project. We're going to do it on time and on budget. My next issue is to improve the safety on our streets and to reduce congestion wherever it's possible. We've all struggled with this for so long. It is an extremely difficult issue. We know that there's significant development going on in Menlo Park, the city, that we have no control over. What we need is greater neighborhood involvement to identify the solutions to the traffic problems that exist on those neighborhood streets. And we're not going to be able to address this if the neighbors don't get involved. We've initiated a process to enable them to get involved and we'll follow through on that. My next issue is we need to find a solution that will enable Atherton to greatly reduce, if not eliminate, its energy use in our new town center. And I think we've got a strategy to do that. And I hope that that serves as a model for greenhouse gas emissions reductions to Atherton residents in general. My next issue is that we need to continue to monitor and advocate against state control of local zoning laws that would be detrimental to our single-family home environment. We initiated that last year with an AMHOC subcommittee and we need to follow through on that and continue to press that issue as it continues to be pressed in the state legislature. I'd like to say that I have a goal of establishing a quiet zone on Watkins Avenue. I actually have that goal, but I have no illusion that it's going to happen this year. I think what is realistic that we could do this year is that we could, uh, come up with a design to, uh, construct wide gates on Watkins Avenue um, that will improve safety at the Watkins Railroad crossing. And I think that's the first step that we need to do. Finally, I hope that this Caltrans-sponsored water treatment facility at Carton Field actually begins construction this year. It's only going to happen if Caltrans has the sufficient funds to support it. But I understand that that's true and we're moving forward on it. And I hope that it is able to be expanded to address our persistent drainage problems and oil coming out as well as what has previously been talked about. I think that's important for both Atherton and the protective day. Those are all my items. I don't tell the board we're working on all.
Really? That'd be a danger.
They go out or?
We're gonna take a picture, another picture.
Yes, not mostly time, but yes, during the three hours.
I've worked for the Miller Park Fire Protection District for twenty-three years. I'm still on fire. I wrote a trade law in Miller Park for seventeen years. Now I'm on thirty-two DPA. And some of the biggest fires that there are in Minuteman City. Fires are going pretty good. And the only side we're three or five thousand lit. The first time I ever saw a suicide. Express train. Actually, it was pretty good.
A male's work can ask for that?
In your heart?
Morning fireman.
Thank you so much.
Hello for them. The real terror tax collection. I need to discuss.
But, but, uh...
You guys are putting stuff that they do that starts right today. It's been going on for two years and it's been part of the paper. Sometimes they seem to be getting along better than others. Yes, realistically, uh...
What's up? Is she two? See you guys in eight minutes?
No, we're in eight minutes.
Did look at other...
If everybody could please grab their cape and take their seats and we're gonna start again.
You out here? You too.
Take your mind about like what it's like with the streets.
Yeah.
Where's the start?
Exactly, exactly what I thought would be helpful.
Like informational, like coming off a small area.
Yes, this is different. Yeah, I get you, man. I'll see you later.
Today. There's no competition. Bill's got the word with the law. Oh, shit. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is public comments. If anyone has a public comment on an item that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to come forward. See any public comments? Then we need to report that closed session.
Ladies and gentlemen, the council, the council had a closed session. One was a discussion direction on the election of the city attorney. It was the performance evaluation of the city manager. The council provided a evaluation of that.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Items eight through eleven. Oh, the city manager's report. People shouldn't do that.
I would like to do that.
I just may remember, council, I did not have any specific feedback for a lot of the ones in the city manager's report. So, if that's your answer to questions, council may not have a separate one.
To the mayor. I have a couple of comments. One is just in regards to the civics and the project. I've had residents asked, you know, if they can see a little bit more of the project, you know, from the road or something. They're interested in what's going on. I said, well, everything's been underground. And when things start coming up out of the ground, we'll probably be able to see more. But they kind of expressed the opportunity to maybe have a walk-through or something. Or maybe we could get a hole in the green screen someday, maybe period or something like that. Okay, that was it. And then committee vacancies and major recruitments. You have two vacancies on the environmental programs committee? Do we really have two? I think we only have one because we have a person that... I'll just talk to the committee about that. We have five seats or do we have six seats? Yeah. They're calling Diana, Norma, and Kelly. And so we're just missing one. Okay. The... I noticed in the ad hoc subcommittee updates, the SB fifty subcommittee was not listed. I didn't see it was. And I do have a report out on some updates about the SB fifty bill, the Scottyner housing bill. I can either do it now or at council report, committee reports. And then now, you can talk.
Any other comments on the city manager's report? Okay, it's seen on the board now, but it was consent now. Does anyone from the public wish to call when the consent? Maybe the council would join in. Okay, let's go through the consent calendar. Eight through eleven. On the favor, I... No votes. Fans leave us. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing regarding introduction of amendments to the municipal code for removal of and damage to heritage trees. Enabling amendment to heritage tree preservation guidelines, standards, and specifications. Stephanie?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, mayor and council, as Stephanie Davis, Senator Leonard. So, tonight the council is being asked to ensure amendments to the town's heritage tree ordinance as well as amendments to the town's tree preservation guidelines, standard, and specifications document, which is implemented through the heritage ordinance. So, as you can see from this slide, there has been a series of public meetings and study sessions beginning in September of 2016 to date. The ordinance, which is being presented to you tonight, reflects all of the feedback and direction that the council has given with those meetings. Also, it is noted that back in February of this year, the county commission did conduct a formal public hearing with unanimous vote to recommend council approval of the heritage tree ordinance. So, as a result of these public meetings, the revised ordinance and guidelines being considered tonight include a series of eight areas of amendments. I'm not gonna get into the detail of all those amendments, but just go through the overall summary of what each of those are. The first being incorporation of agricultural industry standards for changing concrete tree activities. The second was a revised definition of heritage tree. The third had to do with reducing the existing adopted tree protection zone or the area of buffer zone around a heritage tree for protection of what can and cannot be embedded in that zone from an area of twelve-pint tree diameter to a different series of various diameters depending on the tree and activities being conducted. The fourth amendment is that the ordinance and guideline now provides greater specification of what kind of work is both permitted and permitted within that GPC. The fifth area of amendments included now address a staff-level exception process to those GPC standards. Those exceptions now have specific measurable criteria to review such requests against as well as language that will address requests to move or relocate a heritage tree. The sixth area of amendment has to do with the tree preservation guidelines or tree preservation plans now requiring a tree inventory prior to any construction. That includes photos as well as an appraisal of all heritage trees prior to permanent issuance. The seventh is more general of other textual and directional additions to both the ordinance and guidelines. And what the last amendment has to do primarily with the ordinance and guidelines definitions, its processes, and the enforcement activities upon conference and legal recognition with the city attorney's office. At the most recent council study session back in November, there were three further topics that were given. Those topics are now addressed in the final draft ordinance and guidelines that are being presented to you tonight. They had to do with, one, the requirement now for a maintenance bond or security deposit for our heritage tree removals associated with planning commission applications, not for staff levels, heritage tree removal permits for better dangerous trees. The intent is that these are to be refundable after successful replanting of the said tree and that there is a timeframe associated with these bonds and security clauses. The second additional amendment has to do with heritage trees on the main property or non-provisions that require inventories and assessments of any heritage tree within fifteen feet of a shared property site. These need to be noted on a required tree protection and preservation plan, the inventory. And the additional caveat now that the permittee must require, be required to present to the town be a certified mail notification that they have let their neighbor know or they would be conducting work in, they have a tree in the GPC of that shared property. And then lastly, has to do with the process of heritage tree relocation. All the earth ordinance is currently silent on that. The policy and now recommended land... The policy and now recommended language process would be to process such requests as a heritage tree removal by the planning commission. There is now additional language in the ordinance that would also have these types of requests require a maintenance bond, security deposit be submitted to assure that once the tree is located after a certain amount of time, that tree is still healthy and viable and stable for this relocation. So with that, staff is recommending the two actions before the council tonight, which is the introduction of the ordinance amending municipal code, chapter eight point one zero, removal and damage to heritage trees, as well as the adoption of a resolution which would amend the associated town's heritage tree preservation standards and specifications. With that, staffs have any answering questions that the council may have?
Questions?
Any, no question, maybe we'll. It's first time really focused, like the difference between the ordinance and the standards document. As I understand, the standard document provides guidance to the ordinance, is that correct? And so is the standard document enforceable by itself, or is it only the ordinance enforceable, or is it provided by the standards and specifications?
I think the standards fill in terms in the ordinance. It makes it easier, by the way, so that any kind of standard doesn't appear to be working. Staff and the city council can make it with a simple resolution to change the standard without having to be, you know, ninety, hundred, twenty days. So it does supplement it, but it does it in a way that doesn't really change it in the long term, it changes in the future.
On my end.
Yeah.
Part of the process of revision that was done was to bring the two much more in alignment than they had been. So there was a substantial set of differences. There may have been conflict, I'm not sure if it was a direct conflict, but there was a difference. And that's really been eliminated through this process.
And the guidelines provide much more specificity, for example, the content of the tree preservation for site land or inventory, how to show trees. Or else ordinance doesn't describe that much of stuff.
I think it's my other question, like with that example, what specificity? Are those specifics something they're binding upon a resident or this?
They are, they are binding on the residents through the ordinance. It's kind of like you have an ordinance that says, here are the rules. And the rules, it's in compliance with the standards, so the standards have to apply with standards to the rules. So that would accept all much pages and bits and pieces of the standards, see if you can do that separately.
I have just a technical, how is the amount of the bond or the maintenance on, is it that?
So for the maintenance bond, it will be the base value of the tree from the nursery, so it won't be from the previous heritage tree. Is that based on a formula? Based on the diameter of the species? And things like that? And use a worksheet that will be there for everybody to follow.
Just a follow-up on that. So there is a period of time after the new tree is planted or the existing tree is relocated that has to go by to ensure that that tree is going to live, correct?
Yes, it will be determined and that time will be anywhere from months to three years. And then it needs to survive, and then they can.
And the resident has to be proactive in that, they have to come, you know.
No, at the end of three years, you will send out a notice to the resident, and then after thirty days, they have to respond, will send another one out. And then it will be reported, so we will respond to the resident's request.
So just one more question. It does seem that you will have to have a pretty detailed record-keeping system to trigger that. Because, you know, with all the trees that are relocated or being planted, I mean, after a year, two, or three, you, I mean, who's going to track all this?
So this is only for planning commission heritage tree removal, so I would say ten, fifteen, twenty of those a year at the most. So it won't be, you know, like a regular staff removal, so there's much more. So we already checked these with the recycling deposit and already other deposits in the building department, so we can.
Other questions? Hearing no questions, are there any public comments on this? I don't see any public comments approved back from the council. Any comments from the council?
One.
Yep.
I'll take it. Just on that tracking, I know it's not a lot of trees, but because those costs are recoverable, you know, make sure that that, so. It gets covered because it's very easy to, as time goes by, the person changes and so on and so forth. Three years is a long time, so somehow we have to have a three years times, three years loads of trees is.
Is this a track, is it a tracking? As a, was it a deposit compliant?
It would be, or it could happen prior at the permittee's request. So the three years is a caveat, those perhaps forget about the permittee's happen, that they could come in the day after and they'd be refunded much in advance of the three years.
But we have to make sure it's living. And the tree is alive.
After the arborist's performance inspection, at the permittee's request.
Oh, nice.
So on the tracking and the forfeiting of, you know, if it is a contractor that's putting it up and doing like a spec house, then they put the bond down and then they say, okay, I sold the house, I want my money back. How is that being handled, or is it being handled? You don't have the contractor pay the deposit, then the new owner or a person sells the house, the new owner comes in and asks for a refund, so how are you going to track that? And the original provider of the bond doesn't ask for it back, but another owner does, I assume that the balance forfeited.
So it will only give the money back to whoever paid the money, so if the owner's asking for it and the contractor paid for it, it won't help, but the new owner will go back to the prison. So actually paying the bond.
That's the kind of thing that usually in escrow, the new buyer dumps one again, the old buyer takes the deposit back. But it does one, but the property as long as it's outstanding. It shouldn't cover it.
Okay, great, thanks. I was glad that we put that in, we mentioned in the course of the meeting, but we identified in that section.
Yeah, I just don't see it several times.
Yeah.
And the motion. And the motion is to introduce an ordinance amending chapter eight point ten. And adopt in the resolution, amending the heritage tree preservation standard second.
Yeah, that's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have to have that, right.
Yes, we'll go back to the second. Excellent. Next item on the agenda is the award of contract for city attorney services.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, you met the closed session and provided directions to staff to bring the open session here for the award of city attorney services contract. So the council gives us here, and have a note that we're proud of. The question would be for whatever firms you like, that the staff, city attorney, staff, the respective purposes are in, and then authorize the mayor to.
Questions? Are you done? Is there any public comment? Hearing none? Council comment?
Sure. I just, I want to thank everybody that was involved in this process, including Mr. Connors, helping us get to the final outcome that we came out. It was a very detailed process, verification references. My two colleagues spent a lot of time doing things that well above, you know, calling other jurisdictions. We've gotten very used to two very good attorneys, eight years, six months, three minutes, so. And with that, we've gotten very used to becoming part of the family, so we, I think, and I'm not saying, saying we really feel like replacing family members. So this process became very detailed because replacing a family member is like a child. So we do want to thank you guys, you in this process have been tremendous. My two colleagues have spent additional time and all five of us that really went down to the hash mark with three very good candidates, so.
So I would like.
Well, can I just?
Well, please.
Do the.
Please, go ahead.
I want to echo Kerry's sentiment, and I was wanting to do that also, that this was not an easy process, but it was a really thorough process. And trying to find replacements for this team that we've had for over eight years was, well, impossible, really. And so we're not replacing like the client, it's really, you know, but you've brought to our council a very high level of expertise and knowledge and discussion and discourse and, you know, stability over the last eight years, and I'm very grateful for that. I will remember, I'll never forget the first time I met, Councilor Connors was in Hubble Beach. I was at the lodge. At the lodge at the, and we were out having lunch and we met you there with your wife because we were there in a conference and I got word that you were going to be interviewing you and talking to you and everything. And it was, it's just been a really great experience, and Jim, I think you've added so much also, so. Anyway, I just want to thank you.
I'll make the remarks. I thought that all four of the candidates that we interviewed were really excellent. I, you know, when we went out with this RFP process, I really wanted a series of soul practitioners because like Kerry said, it's a family relationship and that's what we developed. And we didn't initially get that, we did get one finally, but I felt like, to my surprise, all four of the those that responded to us were really high quality, so I think we could have gone fine with any of the four.
Should I make a motion?
Give the motion.
So after much deliberation and every council member interviewing and asking questions and researching references, the majority of the council has decided to hire the law firm of Chronic Masabets, Tuvman, and Gerard with Monai Ibrahim as the lead attorney, and that would be my motion to direct staff to prepare the contracts to hire her as our city attorney.
Authorize it to the mayor.
Authorize the mayor. And authorize the mayor to execute.
Second?
Sorry.
And if the mayor's not here, we'll talk about.
If the mayor's not here, then you as the former mayor would take.
I just want, we needed to have that in the motion.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
No votes?
It's not relevant in the motion, but I think it's, you mentioned all four were impressive. I hope that we reach out to the, all again, you know, all the applicants in a way as respectful and.
The city manager, your chances, we contacting the. Okay, we're moving on. The next item on the agenda is item fourteen, which is a discussion of the Seminole County's Office of Sustainability proposed disposable food service ware and possible restrictions on their use.
Tonight, staff is requesting to contact the county office to relay a draft model ordinance that would change the applicable restrictions on disposable foods and service ware. So within that, the Office of Sustainability in San Antonio County is working on a county-wide effort for a name of dock and ordinance that would limit the use of disposable food ware. And would require commercial facilities to standardize disposable, recyclable, reusable food ware. We contacted, that mentioned, DC, and how we're interested in whatever. To date, they have stated that there is approximately sixteen cities that have residents interested in doing this effort. Within the town, the ordinance as it's currently drafted would apply only to mental college, mental school, sacred heart schools, the circus club, and the library. The environmental programs committee did review this topic a few months back, and they manually are recommending that the council consider adoption of such ordinance. With the amendment, that the council also consider that such ordinance be applicable to town facilities, meaning all the park facilities as well as the town center. The draft model ordinance was included as an attachment within the staff report. I'd like to note that if the council does direct staff to further evaluate this topic, that any ordinance, of course, could be tailored specifically as to however the town desires. Furthermore, it is anticipated, based on our conversations with other jurisdictions as well as the county office, that the state may require such regulation sometime in the near future. Again, right now, there is a state mandate requiring such, it's just a county-wide effort focused by the Office of Sustainability. So with that, I have to answer a question of the council.
So thanks for the report. I've looked at a similar report with the SPWMH, they're about to do something as well. My question here is that even with the recommendation from the EBC, or maybe it's just my misunderstanding, would that apply to the food trucks that are also coming to do many of the construction sites and they're handing out food just in many different ways?
I believe that if those food trucks obtained permit from the San Antonio County Environmental Health Department and San Antonio County requires such ordinance or adopts such ordinance, then the answer would be yes.
But we don't know.
We don't know, no one's adopted it yet. The only jurisdiction that currently has such ordinance is the city of Pacific, and they were ahead of this.
But if we, if we decided to put that in, if we could make whatever amendments we want to have as far as applicability, is that correct?
Correct.
We have ordinance relating to mobile food. And so we certainly, we have the initiatives in there, garbage cans and other things, so we can certainly add that to it sometime in the future.
So this would apply to any commercial activity in the town, correct?
The way that's currently drafted.
So why, so if food truck were licensed by the town, why wouldn't it just apply to that?
They have their own business. Well, they do have that permit from the health department, town, capital, so. Can they're really more than, more to the state? That state makes us keep our hands off.
The other question I had was just to confirm that my understanding is that mental college, mental school, sacred heart, and the other. and the other listed conflict areas to which this would apply are already in compliance with this.
Yeah, we spoke preliminarily with them and shared the ordinance with all of the disposal facility that you just mentioned. They have informed us they're doing that to increase the rate that they, without actually, I don't know how far they're headed for, if they're looking at on their own accord.
The question I have is, by numbers, the largest number of people coming in there are the public schools. This obviously isn't the least of public schools. Do you have any idea what their policies are or what policies apply to them?
I don't, but... The question about public schools, who has written the public schools? Is the state, it's not the county?
Right.
Yeah, enforcement. What impact would that have on enforcement? And how would it be enforced? And the cost of, associated with enforcement, both here as well as if the county just adopts it county-wide? Has that been considered, and are there any ideas or estimates?
I certainly no cost estimates at this point. In terms of enforcement, if, for example, if it's a library facility, we have a little bit closer ability to oversee or enforce that at the school, if you have to make that through, we have a more difficult time with this.
Is there a true, like, any ordinance? That's where we have to go on.
Sure.
But I understand, we don't constrain the public schools.
No, no, I'm not referring to the public schools. I'm referring to those that this would apply to. It would be...
The terms of enforcement, enforceability, right now, there's a penalty in state law. So it's not, even if it says it's mandatory, it's directed, not mandatory. And so right now, to be honest, there's nothing we can do to enforce it, unless the county adopts it with some kind of penalty for, for, not for, for. Definitely not, probably the county would enforce it.
But it's a local ordinance that we adopted.
Last week, yeah.
And then we violated that. Can I understand that? It's a little hypothetical, they, one of these institutions just said, forget it, we're not going to do it, and we had passed an ordinance.
If it's a public school, there's nothing we can do.
I understood.
If it's a private school, and I can handle ordinance, we don't have, we don't enforce that, we see that. You're wrong.
So we could just straighten this, maybe we do. Any other questions? Okay, any comments from the vote? Kerry, done, I'll bring back the council, I'm interested in the council. Yep.
I just, my, my personal opinion about this is that I think it's a really important issue. I'm glad that the county has taken a lead on it. And even though we don't have dozens of restaurants or hotels or a lot, and we have a small amount of entities that would be affected, I think we should do whatever we can to reduce waste and plastics in our environment. And I'm also encouraged that the seven entities that are listed here have already voluntarily taken a lead in, in reducing their waste. And so I don't think the ordinance has written for even, and if we amend the ordinance to put some penalties in it so that we can enforce compliance, would impose undue hardship, hardships to the entities. So I'm in full support of proceeding. And like anything new, I mean, you know, it's a first step, and we can always, we can always adjust.
Kerry? I agree with the concept. I just don't like the fact that we're being regulated by every agency. You're adopting somebody else's policy. The concept, I mean, or just, I just wish it was us that did it.
I do. But we have not even the lead or the ship in all these things.
Related to the food vendor trucks, that's one, if we call it, that is our basic commercial, it's mobile in town. And they're the ones that are often throwing the trash off the ground or somewhere nearby, a construction site. So I think we've got to develop a team for that so that we, you know, make sure that they do comply with this, because I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I'll comment. I, I agree. I think that we should specifically include the food vendor trucks, and I think we should include the town as EPC represent.
So what I heard Still say was that if we pass an ordinance, which I think, you know, that this is something that's good, we should strongly consider it, then enforcement of any would be our responsibility. If the county passes it for all county jurisdictions, then the county has to enforce it. Did I understand that right?
Right.
So I don't understand why you wouldn't just have the county. We can send a letter to the county saying we fully endorse it, please include food trucks, and you pass it. And then it would cover us, and that way we have no obligation for enforcement, no costs associated.
Let me ask for, if the county passes an ordinance that applies to the county areas, doesn't apply to the town?
Except for county entities inside the kind of like schools.
Public, but not the private, totally not the town facilities. So if the county passes it, it wouldn't apply to the town?
And we do have a home, 1218040 says from many vehicles. It does talk about, they're handling the trash and things like that, so.
We can, we might want to amend that particular section.
Required.
That would require this, yeah.
I'm doing, I was...
Yes.
I think I agree. A couple things, I guess. One is, I think it's important that anybody apply to others, you should apply to the town as well. That's, that's important. I also, I would like to see us send a letter or do something to the public schools, because the truth is, Avery is far more trash and waste than, than all the entities we have listed here in the EMA itself, probably just the whole area, if anything. Be nice to find out what the status is there, follow up and something along that fashion. And finally, when the time comes, we'll make a conversation about that penalty. I'm not sure. I just, I want to be thoughtful about that concern, that we not be rotating it on this.
So can I, can I just ask a quick question about the public schools? Do we know for sure that they're not taking some measures? I mean, I think that this issue is really a groundswell with the youth in our country right now to try to be more sensitive about plastics and waste. And there are, and I think it's kind of percolating up, and so maybe the public schools do have more programs than we are aware of.
I think I suggest that we find out a little while on it.
Yeah, I can, I can just make a, one comment regards to the public schools. The SBWMA has run a pilot program by sending staff to public schools in an effort to get them to recycle and pay attention to things like this. And with the staff on site over a period of time and several months of education, they have improved the recycling, but what that tells me is that they weren't doing the recycling, and they were, were not paying attention to things like this at public schools.
I see.
I, I think the private schools are probably a little bit more ahead of the game, and that's what their indication has been. But there's a little bit more discipline at some of those schools. And, but anyway, so I think a letter would be great, and, you know, we just asked...
I would suggest, I think it's a really good comment. And I would suggest that once we adopt the ordinance, we send a letter to each public school within Athens, informing them that we've adopted this ordinance. And, you know, suggesting that they follow it. I mean, we don't have to say it in those words, but they took them by the wind, and, and we could initiate a dialogue. I don't want to spend a lot of staff time on it, but I think a letter is...
So do we bang that out? Do we need a motion or directions as to direct, to see the ordinance would have come out? Got it. In the course of looking at putting that ordinance together, if you should think about penalties that might...
The penalties are violation of any city code section that occurs within. There are regular penalties. The first offense is fifty dollars, the second is a hundred dollars, and the third, five hundred dollars. Kind of two fifty, five hundred. But it's the same regardless of, unless there's some special provision where we, like, the building for the P D, you know, and things like that. Normally, penalties are just a standard, you violate, you cover the penalty and such.
I just want one question.
Go ahead.
And there is a, a time of transition for these entities to be able to use up their existing inventory of service wares there and that at all. What would you think about that? I, how would you gauge that? But you would think that, you know, day one, say, January one, we pass this, and, you know, from here on out, we have to get all new containers.
Well, this, right now, it's just a legislation. They should, I don't think, I don't think they've adopted their ordinance yet. And so, I mean, these issues, they're going to have to go through that whole, the cities around us. So it's something that...
There is a notice period, and if they're doing that...
Yeah, they're already used on us.
Yeah, it seems like that. All right.
It would be us.
Yeah. Francesca, you know your words.
When we talk about it, one thing I'm concerned about is, are you in compliance with 5% of the plasticware you're using, EPC standards? But kids being kids, 5% of it doesn't. And does that mean each spoon is a violation of this thing? That may be crazy, but that's kind of the issue I'm concerned about. That's kind of a good one, I thought.
Well, what I can say is that from the current point of view, city, our approach is almost the common sense. And I'm very sure that the new city, our, we're going to have a, have a handoff period, and plenty of time for us to talk about philosophy, that's something that they were...
Okay, I think we should move on.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Yes, thank you, Stephanie. Next item on the agenda is the residential alarm ordinance. I mean, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go with that. The town office ordinance, I'm not going to use it like here. We sent out a communication to users, the larger users, and that communication was probably a bit confusing, a little bit of uncertainty, and they pulled responsibility for that. We probably could have been more careful in releasing that information in our data. However, once that communication was released, we, we raised that question to a few of the council members as to what we actually adopted this year. When explained, what we actually adopted versus what some members of the council thought we adopted was different. We're now returning to this issue in that council for discussion, and maybe some tweaking, and the effect of tweaking, and getting right the second time around. Bottom line, the ordinance that we adopted provides that all residents with alarm systems, regardless of whether they are monitored by the town or monitored by the private company, pay the fifty dollar per year annual fee, and are required to update their information in the town's system as registered users. All new alarms that are installed are required to pay a one-time hundred dollar alarm registration fee. The ordinance doesn't specifically order it that way, and that does need to be directed. We should have corrected that the last time around. The council can advise if that is still the direction you would like to proceed, or if you'd like to tweak it in any or some other way. What had come up is, wait a minute, I thought it was just fifty dollars per year for those alarms that are town monitored. And anyone else that's C D monitored, I think it's up to here, but if they're new, they pay a hundred dollars. So that's, that's the confusion. We know what properties have alarm systems that are town monitored, and we know what properties have alarm systems that are not monitored by the town, but that have experienced a false alarm, swamps too. What we don't know is what properties have alarm systems that haven't experienced a false alarm. We don't know what properties in town don't have alarm systems. It's been suggested that we get some blanket letter out to everybody explaining whatever we worked out this evening, once we get all the work suggested, and maybe, you know, grandfather in or waive the hundred dollar registration fee for those systems that are currently in existence, and then figure out what we want to do, fifty dollar fee. There's also been conversation around how we can justify that fifty dollar fee for those systems that are monitored by E P. That's also a conversation, or the monitoring company rather than the town. But either way, we've got to tweak what we got. We tonight will at least the concept of what we could do to accomplish that. That's it. Questions? Actually, slightly off-topic question, but I was struck by this business you cited in there, that there's, there have been however many false alarms, 4,000, 509, and none of them have been traded by natural burglaries, etc.
That's correct. Back in 2000, 2008, it doesn't, 15, there were eight actual alarms. There's not been one since, to my knowledge, except for last November during our, I'm sorry, is it last November or last December, there was a spike in burglaries? That wasn't real.
So there wasn't one licensed, that's approximately a year ago, or a year ago?
There were one during the spike of burglaries that we experienced, we had one real one.
That one did have E P.
Correct.
What about the 599? I'm sorry.
So, and that number remains inconsistent, and we were, I think it's too early in the game to see the effects of intent, or intent sort of, of these number of false alarms. I know that we're getting residents tens of thousands using communications, so it was...
I think in the 27 burglaries that spiked last, it was December, some, some of those were alarm systems that were...
They did have alarm systems, but the, the, which the burglaries, they didn't enter. The alarm, the...
I think they were reporting that around the...
No, we believe they, they were...
Just pointing clarity, it had 4,599 number of alarm systems. Doesn't mean that the alarm didn't ensure somebody wants to be, the bomb went off, or they went in that direction, and we couldn't detect where they actually, you know, the alarm setting, set it off. So some of these may be just deterrents for burglaries that potentially hurt the alarm and set it off.
That's not, I understand your answer, because they're, they're very good when they respond, and they know they're dealing with the owner of the alarm company, and it's false, and it's an unfortunate treat. I was wondering if we'd go, wow, what, you know, they're doing a check. The majority of that 4,500 are able to be mitigated by dispatch, by having the personal information in our system and working with the alarm company, which is part of the basis and the justification for fifty dollars today. It's not about revenue generating, but it's about a mechanism to force them to come in, and so we can update their information.
Deficiencies of sales.
So when we were going over the original one, and we questioned the fifty dollar fee, what was that for, and how was that made, and things like that? The comment was, that's about what it's going to take to update the, you know, the cost of updating the resident information, because, you know, over time, they may have different people working in their homes, or people got new cell phones, and that. And part of the problem with the, with the alarms is when an alarm went off, PD would try and contact whoever was on the contact sheet, the old contact sheet, and, you know, maybe the phone had been disconnected or something like that, and so they rolled the officers. And it was the fee, the fifty dollar fee was associated, as I understood, and please correct me, was associated with the cost of taking that information and updating the database with the new contact information. So the fifty dollar fee, it seems like to me, has nothing to do with whether or not you're being monitored by somebody or you're not. Unless I'm misunderstanding what we'd said, but it, but it's, it's actually the real cost of getting that information. And we would want to have, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but we would want to have their current contact information, whether A D T calls them or not. Because when they tell you, roll... Because when they tell you, roll, then you're going to roll. And maybe, you know, for me, I would think that if an alarm goes off in the middle of the night, and it's a false alarm, you might be flustered, A D T calls, says, are you okay? You say, what, what? You know, they said, we got an alarm downstairs. They may not remember their code. They said, well, it's a flustered person and, and roll. So you're still going to try and contact them, but are you not?
We are. It's not uncommon for the private monitoring companies to have misinformation as part of our protocol. When we receive notes from a monitoring system, we then rely on our system to then make contact as well. We're not relying on the fact statements or the records. We don't know often in other parts of the country, you don't know what your team is doing. But we find it important for officer safety, public safety to do that ourselves.
Well, there's a justified cost. People, the fifty dollars that would be associated with, you know.
That probably is just entering the data. It's also having to allow and notify people each year within.
Other comments or questions? Is there any public comment?
I, I think that being clear that, if, I think you said you had twelve hundred alarms in the staff report. People that are wired to your system that you know about, fifty dollars for those people, you already know about them. But anybody else, it should be, I would recommend that we contact the whole community and say, if you have an alarm, regardless of what you have, and what you're doing, responding to that new alarm, and the calls us will have to respond. And that's, you know, they will have any alarm companies that are armed that are coming out here, I would assume. I would think that we would contact every area and charge the fifty dollar, the hundred dollar fee.
So I think that it would also be wise for us to send out a letter to everyone in the town. It basically says, we've changed our ordinance and requirements regarding alarm systems going forward. Any new registration of an alarm will involve a hundred dollar registration fee. And there will be an annual fee of fifty dollars that will be applicable to our alarms to enable us to monitor and update the information on an annual basis. And we've, we've changed the fees for false alarms. Just give them all that information. And then we, I think we should tell people that if they currently have an alarm, that there will be no registration fee as long as they respond to us and provide updated information. And they will have an annual fifty dollar fee. And if they don't respond and register their system within X period of time, and I'm inclined to say six months, that then they will have a registration fee, they'll have a hundred dollar registration fee going forward. So essentially, we're grandfathering anyone that responds to the notice within six months. Because I don't think we should waive the hundred dollar fee for alarms that are monitored and people that have unmonitored alarms that whom we've responded, because that ends up penalizing the people that have unmonitored alarms and who haven't had a false alarm. And that makes no sense to penalize those folks. And we don't know who has an alarm and who doesn't. So it would be best, I think, just to grandfather in that as long as they respond within a certain period of time, to ensure that their system is registered, that there's no registration fee.
I, I think that makes good sense. And it's, uh, it's a reasonable approach. I like the idea of waiving the fee if they respond in time of manner, because I think it's very, very important for us to have current information. I, I believe that. I don't have current information because we've kind of taken our landline offline. And I think the P D has, so I've got to go down and do this. And I'm not going to pay my fifty dollars to, to update my information. But like in everything, it's the excellence of our execution of informing the residents, of educating the residents about the importance of having their information current and updated for their safety, for the town's safety, and how we get them, you know, their attention and them to respond. Because I've been approached by several residents who go, come on, you're going to charge me fifty dollars a year now just to have my alarm, you know, registered? Like, why? Why? You've never charged me fifty dollars ever before. So, I mean, is, is it just an annual thing that's going to have to happen every year? Because there's some longtime residents that have the same information that they had for twenty, fifty years. So I, it's, it's, um, it's, is it a one size fits all? But I think that what you're kind of recommending is we have a waiver for the people that haven't registered, if they register.
Well, I don't think any, I mean, the only people that have really registered.
Is the thirteen hundred.
Signed up.
The thirteen hundred, right, yeah. And they, they need to have their update too.
Yeah, and I'm, but it's not twenty-five or fifty years, because people didn't have emails back then. And the number of emails that have changed from AOL to Gmail is enormous.
Yes, yes. However, but what, what the P D has, they have addresses and codes and, um, phone numbers.
Whether someone has a dog.
Cell phones, yeah, yeah. And there's a, there's a code that, if my alarm goes off and they call, they say, um, or if I want to do it, they say, what's your code? There's a, what is your code? Did you know? Do you remember yours?
Yeah. I'm not going to tell you what it is.
Well, I think I remember mine.
People change their codes, and this is exactly why.
That's it.
Maybe you don't, and it's perfectly.
Another question about your proposal. So several people came in right after getting that letter and registered. So are we giving people a pay? So are we going to do the refund? Are we giving everybody a moratorium or a for, or, or, I just couldn't credit this in the future? We need to, I think it needs to be addressed.
Yeah, all the ones that paid the hundred dollars are those that are not monitored by the town. Everybody else should have gone to pay fifty bucks.
Oh, just get the counting and totally finalize things and then.
And then Robert hit up. They're about to see, we received some of that we're hoping here.
Hold here.
Hey, that's fine.
They said, here, give five hundred dollars and leave me alone.
I think we want to administer the hours.
Oh. Well, that kind of defeats their purpose, doesn't it?
I know, they need a lot of form.
They do, they, I believe they.
Do you want to sort of like every year?
And administration.
That's why they save a thousand dollars.
They don't want to be, they don't want to be monitored.
Administration is through.
Finance.
Finance and we need both.
Finance is the.
Who is initiating the, is the annual renewal on a calendar year basis? So everybody in town gets notified.
Do we notify?
Or everybody that has an alarm. Obviously, this first letter is going to go to everybody, but then once all registered alarms, they're going to get a notification at the same time for fifty dollars.
Yeah, from Robert. Robert sends their notification. Right, and once you pay, that becomes your beneficiary. Well, you can't let people have the moratorium and then say, hey, you paid early, so you're penalized. Come on, Robert.
I paid early.
There's no more, there's no tarot.
It's just, yeah. And they, you know, the main goal is to know, for the ones that already participated, I don't think there's any which.
How would you restate Rick's proposal, just to extract your standard?
Uh, what, what I ask is, uh, going forward, we change, we send a letter to contact the entire community, tell them to change the ordinance, going forward, there's a new hundred dollar registration fee, an annual fifty dollar fee, all alarms, monitor, update information, that's the purpose of the fee. Tell them, uh, we updated the changes and the fees for false alarms, how that is, basically given the entire, bulk marshal the ordinance provides. If they currently have alarm, no registration fee is required, a lot of updated information. If they hear that by a day or two, it's going to be a lot six months out. If they self-do it by that day, with alarms or non-town monitored alarms, there's a registration fee on that.
I just say for non-registered alarms, because all the town monitored alarms will be registered.
Yes, updating that. Oh, just that, we should have a standard time for the renewals, that's all. But it shouldn't be based on when you, I don't know, if you, if you rush down and pay your fifty dollars, like a number of residents, including myself. There shouldn't, you know, I shouldn't have a different date, it's six months after Elizabeth, but she hasn't seen the letter yet. Okay, for example. It's when they pay.
Because that's, that's what triggers the annual thing.
So. So I, I disagree. I think the process should be a set timeframe, just like anything else. Therefore, the cost for doing it every year is a routine for the police department, not randomly, whenever anybody else does it. And also include the letter that anytime any changes occur, you can automatically submit or change online to the police department randomly throughout the year. Again, have a set date, January first, if that's the full year cycle, whatever that is, because randomly is going to be a nightmare.
I agree with that. That's good.
And if, if there's a handful of people who have a concern that Bill does that they've paid four months ago, then give those people a twelve and a half dollar credit. I mean, just prorate it. So, and you can do that on an individual basis. But I think the idea of an annual renewal, everyone in town is the right thing, just administrate it.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
All right.
And they'll see the ordinance again, because we have to make.
I'd like to see the letter.
Plus on top of that, it'll keep the cost down.
Before we leave this issue, I want to raise one question, which we discussed before, which is, what if somebody doesn't pay? What are we going to do? And with those alarms that are monitored, if they don't pay the renewal fee, then we can, we can decline it, continue to monitor them. That they can go get private monitors.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
That's actually written in the order. Because you're going to pay us for a service. If they're not paying this, they don't get the service.
With the other fifty dollars, the ones that are not monitored, if they don't pay, there's really not much we can do about it. I mean, well, what is, that's my question. Somebody that is not monitored, um,
Not monitored at all.
Yeah, I mean, if some, somebody who has an alarm that is not monitored by the active police department, but, uh, doesn't provide the annual updated information, or even I guess if they do, if they refuse to pay the fifty dollar fee, what, then it's just, it's a bill like any other bill, right, that we send notes for.
If, if the ordinance goes through, it sounds like it's going to go through. It will have, everybody that has a alarm that's either monitored by us or by somebody else, will have to pay the fifty dollar fee. There is a third category, by the way. There are alarm systems that you can buy that will just set an audible alarm, you know, in your house. Look, but it doesn't go outside to anybody. You will have trouble, I believe, making those people pay a fee, because we're not updating their information. And under Proposition 218, we have to, fee can exceed the cost of providing the service. We're not providing them a service, we can't charge them.
Whatever, that's reasonable.
Well, we could pass the fee of those folks that are being monitored through, uh, law lines or some other.
Well, yeah.
Does it notice like any other?
Administrators like J C O. I don't think that's going to be a problem.
Because A D T or other security systems calls our P D. They get the alarm, they call us, and then we have to respond.
Yeah, there, there are self-monitoring systems.
And that's the, the difference in the rate of false alarms between those and correct, who doesn't go through another service.
I don't have an answer to that.
It doesn't matter, any of the alarm that. The rates, you're right.
So we'll go back with modification of the ordinance, perhaps both letters go out.
Okay, I think we're done with that issue. Uh, the next issue is item seventeen, which is to. Sixteen, sixteen. Oh, yeah, that's right, right, thank you. Acceptance of donation naming requests and report.
Yes, thank you, the mayor members of council. Uh, this item has three components to it, and staff are trying to take it in each in order. Uh, the first would be looking at the attached naming requests that are, yeah, now handout. Uh, treat that information as needed and provide staff with some direction for producing a town version. I sent out earlier today a draft, a special edition town center newsletter that's going out straight one, that should be to the tractors tomorrow or the next day. To go out to the community, and that's got a very narrow version, so much you have in your act report. But any feedback to this information would be helpful. Uh, the second part is an update from council member Rupert on this recent contact today that happened in town, in all directions. And the third is the formal acceptance of the naming requests listed in the staff report. However, the naming request for the technology hub has been withdrawn, so we have two unit A and C, and a Catholic church in the lories. Uh, from that stage, read the marks.
Great, questions?
Based on, is there any public comment? Based on the true effect of council and let's deal with it in these three separate items. First item will be dealing with the general naming and the score fundraising. And it's my understanding that on this list that's attached, is attached one, that we previously decided to reduce the new road cost to five million dollars. And, um, we've got, of course, two requests that were written, we'll, on their list, we'll.
So, who's for the chair? I have a comment, because, um, as I was on the, um, ad hoc subcommittee, um, as the ASON to the Accrington Now, uh, fundraising committee throughout its process, and was part of the discussion and what I want to say, brainstorming, uh, of these ideas and assigning, uh, dollar amount to them, um, back in twenty sixteen. Um, and if we focus on like the preamble of this list, it's very clear that, um, this was put together by the subcommittee, um, and, uh, discussed with town staff and council. And then it was approved by the council in twenty sixteen. However, um, it goes on to say that these names and values represent the most current available information from the site warrants by architects. And that these, uh, lists and amounts may change from time to time as further details emerge. And so in, in, when we were putting this together back in twenty sixteen, uh, it was always my understanding, because we were trying to kind of, uh, fill something out and get it and, uh, try to maximize the dollar levels as much as possible. Uh, but as the project has evolved, even, we have done, um, an elimination of some of these areas due to cost and, uh, methods of the final plans, uh, this has changed. This has changed quite a bit, and then, that I want to make sure that, uh, we are aware of. And I think that the donor levels, the financial levels, as we can see, um, I think, should be reconsidered and, um, maybe modified, uh, to maybe come in to, um, to the more, um, of the donor employment that we've been experiencing. The other thing I'd like to say is that, um, the fleshing out of some of these, well, I think all of the descriptions, really need to be, uh, done, so that if you present this, uh, list or this document to donors that may want to, um, contribute, they have their naming opportunity on it, they need to really understand in more detail what and where and how these spaces, uh, are now, uh, designed to feel, so that they have a, uh, another machine with their investment as home for them. Especially in the lower part, uh, the, um, you know, the quote-unquote the community phase of the cattle campaign. That certainly was never fleshed out. So, I think that initially, when this was done, it was done, uh, to kind of set a template kind of a thing. And then it was, I think always my thought, that the other committee, you know, would take it and broaden it to make it more attractive since. I, I don't think that we want, personally, we want to go down item by item tonight and try to modify all of this, um, in a workshop here. I would like to maybe ask, um, Mayor to create an ad hoc committee to do that and bring it back, so that, uh, we can, um, look at it, uh, in, in a more detailed way. We have received, um, uh, some interest, uh, you know, additional donor interest, as you know, with the Louris, uh, for the Library Terrace, which we're gonna talk about. Um, and, uh, further interest from another resident, uh, who wants, you know, to name a conference room or, uh, other kind of space, uh, for the Hubbard Memorial, uh, that, you know, there's not, yes, document that really clearly defines that. So, that's kind of my initial thoughts here.
Who's coming? Eric?
Wow.
And briefly?
I, I agree, I think that, you know, the irony seems out as important as we've been forward, because we, you know, really don't know what to be offering, residents that may be even asking. Um, and since some of the things of the project have changed, it might be a better idea to look at what we can, and we take it with the proper amount of time, to be sensitive enough to figure out what we're offering.
Well, so, um, in the interest of time, because I don't want to spend a lot of time on those right now, I'm avoiding it. If anyone has specific comments about any dollar amount or description, I think that would be valuable, uh, and we'll take that now. Uh, if not, I'd like to set up an ad hoc committee and like to know if any of you would like to participate on that committee. And, um, I'd like that committee to specifically take this, change the letterhead to the town of Atherton, and address essentially what, uh, Elizabeth suggested. I, there, there, if the committee may come up with some other ideas to the plans, or a couple other items, that, that may eliminate a couple items that are no longer part of the plans. Um, and it may suggest changes in dollar amounts. Um, I think, and, and, and it can certainly eliminate all the language after the table that it chooses. I think that there's, uh, a difference for naming opportunities in these larger amounts than there is for what's identified here as the community phase. And there's time urgency on the first, because to the extent that we receive interest in donations, and get those donations before the end of March, we have the potential to avoid the C O P, which is a big part of our goal. So, what I'd like to do is to get that committee ready as soon as possible, and target getting a report back with a recommendation to the council for adoption, or any way.
All right, I volunteer.
Do we move on to this item?
All right, before you do.
Yes, great.
I don't understand what the plan is.
Can we do that?
Is the thought that we're gonna send the cities to send out a letter? I think sending out a letter by itself is not, you know, lead to a happy result, so again, all of that. Is that also gonna be a council, how are we gonna do that?
I think that, uh, great for the subcommittee to hear, and that, that Allen has already sent out a special copy of the Athertonian that includes much of this list. So, I don't think, my, my opinion is, it doesn't make sense to send out a general letter to everyone in town. But I think to have a list that we've approved, that can be circulated, you know, to the press, to vote. I, I'm just.
Elizabeth previously had said that she thought we should send a letter to all the listed donors for Atherton. Now, we don't need dollar amounts that they donated, that they're all listed on their website. And that makes sense, because many of them have contributed amounts. Maybe they'd like to contribute some more in a cheap and idle, and we love that. Or, or maybe they've contributed enough to get, we have three one million dollar donors, and several, several hundred thousand dollar donors, and they ought to have an opportunity to participate in a naming opportunity.
Just to follow up on what you're saying, that, um, you can speak with one of the million dollar donors via email, I think. She said, um, who is unaware of any naming opportunities.
But we've already got the million dollars, so.
Yeah.
I mean, we're using this opportunity to bring in more money by March thirty first.
True, true.
And so, I guess my question is, if we're gonna do it optimistically, I still think we need a plan that would be successful.
Exactly. However, I believe that people who have donated to date, they should be aware of this.
Yes.
And have first crack at it. And if, if, you know, yeah. So, I don't think that all of the four million dollars that, you know, raised would, uh, I, I think there's more.
Let me just reiterate what you said at the first point. I did have a communication from a donor who I sent this list to, and who claimed that he had never seen, or I've gotten any information from that up to now, and for whom I heard that he and at least one other donor were interested in asking for one of these very large naming opportunities, because they'd already donated the amount, and of course, I encouraged them to donate more. But we don't have any authority to make that happen, unless they choose to go for something. You know, and we, we, every item has come before us, anyway, right? Every naming item, notwithstanding putting this link, this is a general side of suggestion.
But, yeah, I think that once we finalize and refine this document, then it would be important to send it out to all of the Atherton donors specifically, and then do as much of a whole campaign as we can.
I guess that's my question, maybe the subcommittee, somebody should think about what we should do. And maybe, by the way, that, that it's two phases, as you're saying, exactly, yeah. March three one days, and post-march three one days, we have a little time.
So let's ask the subcommittee, recommendation of January.
Yeah.
Can we move on to that piece, and the next piece is Bill's.
Okay, so, uh, I spoke with, with Dee, and, you know, informed her that, uh, you know, we're trying to move forward here. Um, and, uh, first, her comment was, a couple weeks ago, I didn't call right after the meeting, uh, that, uh, it's gonna take some time to get some feedback. And she called me just on Tuesday, and said that she reached out to them, and she had actually three ideas of like, what they could have, the million dollar donors, and then that she also had some feelers out to, she, she says there are two, two fifty thousand dollar donors. I believe she said three, is what I've written down, three, three hundred thousand dollar donors, but the numbers don't match up to me, but I, I can't say. Her comments were that the three, uh, million dollar donors would like to have, uh, the new council chambers, the old council chambers, and the plaza outside. And if you look at the list, those are substantially, uh, different levels of donation. Um, there was a comment that, well, since we're, we're cutting, it, it seemed that we were making concessions in, in one case, that perhaps the council would consider the concessions in these other cases.
I, I, how do you follow you though? Could you tell me, tell me those three things again?
Uh, well, one of them's not even listed. The new council chambers, the old council chambers, and the plaza, which is outside the, um, you know, the Town Center.
So the plaza, what's called the civic court?
Yes, civic.
Okay, so the historic Town Hall, which is listed at five billion, and the city fort, which is listed at three billion.
And then, and then one that we.
Going in the half.
Yes.
Which is the new council chambers.
Yes. And just to refresh, the council's feedback early on, which you did not wish that any names of the council.
And so, um, a lot of this was also.
With the P D.
So we, um, there was some discussion, as she was sending out a letter, and we also had sent our letter out, and so, or there was. Your, your contact, your contact had gone out, Rick. And so there was some crossfires and some angst, uh, that we had to get over. Um, but, uh, so that kind of clouded some things as well. But that's, that's essentially the report. Now, I said I would carry the message back. There was no commitment on my part as to, yeah, those things are locked in for anything, because as you can see, the numbers aren't exactly the same. Um, I'm happy to get back with her, uh, as to whether or not we will make a decision, or if we wanna hold off on a decision until after the subcommittee meets and make recommendations, we can do that as well. That might be a better idea.
Maybe some, maybe a recommendation on that, uh, you okay with that? So we'll, so we'll do that, so we'll just.
Yeah.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on, and then we'll, we'll, we'll refer that to the subcommittee. And then the third item is consideration of the K nine quarter offer and the F A tariff.
Well, I, I have no problem with the K nine, uh, quarter offer, as I think the, you know, it's just, right? And, um, and, uh, I think we, um, discussed, uh, Library Terrace last time, and we helped that this, uh, over here.
Yeah, my comment on the, when I spoke with Sandy Levinson, the first time I was asked to contact Atherton Now, it was a couple months ago, she and I identified the K nine corner, and I referred that information to the city manager, and she had been donating for the, the police talk for a long. Uh, so it's, it's appropriate with regards to, the only other information that I did get back from the P D in the very first conversation about the, the terrace, I forgot to mention that, was that it's just that, the only concern would be, that would be, if it's on the wall and it's a big thing.
And we talked about that.
Yeah, and so there's, there's some concern as to how that's gonna be, because it doesn't want to send the message that that donor paid for the library.
Understand, that would, I mean, placement and size and decorum has got to, um, be first and foremost.
That's to P D.
Okay, good, I understand.
I don't think anybody would have a problem making sure that whatever notice of that terrace is small, it's not like who knows the signs, it's, it's a luring terrace.
We're not there.
The.
No.
How about this line?
So, so do you require formal motion for the council to accept?
Um, I'd like to make a formal motion, motion that we accept the two naming, um, rights for the K nine quarter. And do you, do we wanna say in the order?
No, I'm, we already did.
You did, okay, and the library terrace.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, um, I think that concludes this item.
Oh, so, well, you kind of, you did a lot, didn't you?
Everyone did a great aye. Didn't need to ask for a aye. Okay, item seventeen now is the to authorize release of a request for procurement assistance for solar microgrid power services providers. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, the town is currently in the process of constructing the new Town Center and Library Complex. When the project was initially designed, the complex included provisions for, uh, solar infrastructure as well as a microgrid, uh, backup system. Uh, when the bids for the initial project were received, the cost for that solar and energy backup system ranged between roughly three and a quarter and over four and a half million dollars from the two bidders that we got. Um, per council's direction, the project was modified, uh, to find various savings in value engineered project. One of the items that was removed was the installation of solar and, um, battery backup system, with provisions left in for future installation. Um, council further, uh, threatened staff to evaluate the possibility of entering into a power purchase agreement or other similar financing arrangement, such that the installation would be done with upfront, upfront costs paid for by a third party purveyor, uh, which would be able to take advantage of certain incentives that the town is not eligible for. So, uh, attached to the staff report is a draft R and P to solicit procurement assistance. Um, as staff does not have the expertise in selecting, uh, these types of providers, and so, uh, that consultant would be able to provide us with the necessary technical assistance in preparing the request for proposals for the power services provider, helping us manage that R and P process, reviewing the proposals and qualifications, um, and assisting us in selecting and negotiating a contract with that provider, as well as reviewing the documents associated with the design, make sure that they comprise with our needs, and helping us carry it through to make sure that what is built is actually what we need. And so with that, I'm gonna answer any questions that I have.
Question? Eric? Yeah, you're right. Does the, if we move forward, does this, we're going to use a generator, probably, if we have some backup system for?
If, if the council's direction is to move forward with the microgrid system, it would be in lieu of the diesel generator. Um, we can, with council's direction, as we structure that R and P, it'll be coming back to council for review. And it can be one, be an option, give us pricing for just the solar facilities for solar with, um, the microgrid backup. Right now, in the project, we do have the diesel generator with the fuel tank and everything, um, in the current project.
Um, another question related to the battery, um, microgrid. Is there a separate room that we didn't consider, or is considered in the project today for a potential microgrid battery backup system location?
There is space allotted for within the project, I think, within the ancillary building as well as in the Town Center. building as well as in the town center for the batteries. Part of that is, it'd be occupied by generator facilities if we keep the generator.
Final question. Because this is a potential power purchase agreement, is there a lifetime battery included into the power purchase agreement? In other words, if they, if the agreement's for fifteen years and the batteries die every five years, crucial possibility to set.
That would be part of the agreement with the provider, that what we're likely be asking for is the guarantee for the power and the battery for the life of the agreement. And so we can build in options for purchasing the system outright earlier at certain milestones, but they're going to want a minimum duration so that they can recoup some of their, their funds before allowing for buyout.
I just follow up on that question. So it sounds like if, in fact, there's a P P A that includes the microgrid portion as well as the solar panels, then in fact it would reduce the cost of the project to the town because we would not have the generator we already included in our cost system.
I'm going to be a little cautious. We have costs in our current project for that generator. We will save, save a good chunk of those costs. We'll have to pay the current contractor for expenses up to the point that we say don't include that. So we'd have, we'd have a change order with the contractor to remove those components. And so those costs would be saved, but you will have whatever the cost of the P P A provider, and the cost of that service may be different if you have solar only versus solar plus microgrid.
Did you already file? Did you already?
No, I, I didn't, but I can. So the current contract, the information I have on the current cost based on schedule and values is approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the generator itself, plus about another two hundred and forty-five thousand for the fuel tank associated infrastructure for, for that. So combined, we're, you know, north of three hundred and sixty percent.
So that coming off the project cost, but obviously going into a payment.
A payment plan for the period.
That's correct. Just hearing on breaks, question, is there a system that actually has all three of these? Because there may be that the cost of including the generator by change order for a while, at the time you do it, is the cost in effect do it, essence?
Well, there is going to be a time component. Once we know that we're going to go forward, we need to give as much advance notice to S G Almaroso as possible. The reality is, is that the buildings are going to have to be built before the generator gets installed.
What we, us through the pilot and project plan as far as that would go, meaning, when we have to make a decision about our purchase or a consultant, how does that virtual power purchase agreement, any kind of grants we would be able to afford, definitely years after that?
No, I, I mean, our goal, our goal is to have that solar infrastructure in, as basically when the movement is done occurring. And so to do that, we're asking for your authorization to release this assistant, the request for assistance, the desires to come back to you in February if we can have a negotiated contractor or recommendation for that assistance service, and that would quickly dovetail me into working with them to prepare the R F P for the P P A, and we would hope that within a couple of months we'll have that back to you, because we need to make sure that there is sufficient time for the release of that proposal, getting that stuff in, and really vetting the different things that come back. That provider is going to come back with design documents for the solar system, and microgrid, if that's what we want, we'll need to get building permits for that stuff and have that integrated into the construction contract with the timeframe that we have for completing the building. And so if this is the route that we want to go sooner, it is, we want to do this, this group reason again.
Just to add to that, there's, there's a time factor for the party to be entered into the P P A with, to purchase the initial equipment at a minimum within calendar two thousand twenty, so they get the tax credit associated with two thousand twenty. And that tax credit is a little less than the tax credit would have been in two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, I understand the credits are going to go down, but the costs of things also are tricky. But it sounds like we're going to have to select a power purchase agreement, a rider by June or so, is that right? I, I would say that what we would likely do is, we would probably release it in maybe April or so, that thing, go ahead a month or so, so I think I'll tie that in sometime June, July would be a good target for that.
Hope that last year, you were told by September, do what they, you get their credits.
But I mean, obviously, the start.
By June will be well first of all, on private.
Yeah, yeah, so they'll be doing that next year, but they'll be doing a lot of things. The reality is, is that until the roof is up, they're, they're not going to be doing things, and their likelihood is, is that it will be spring of next year where the construction part will happen. Right, I mean, it doesn't take that long to put in a solar system. The part that's going to take the time is really the, that felt like a better way to put it, the brains of the system and how it works, if I'm sure that it functions properly for us. And I say for them, because they're the ones that have to manage it.
So, okay. In the past, we had some power purchase agreement vendors come and present to us, and then when they kind of saw how not so big the project was, they said, well, I don't think this is going to work. I mean, we really reviewed the, the size of the project, the amount of solar currently had designed, you know, as our optical now, and factored in that that is going to be worth somebody's time to do that, that, that was always a problem. And then the other thing, really quickly, is doesn't the state already mandate that you build to be able to receive solar on these new buildings?
I believe that the new building code that you just adopted, starting next year requires so certain, a certain amount of solar infrastructure. This building, because it was, it had gone through the building permit process, it's not patented. It's a desire that we have expressed, the buildings are solar, are going to be solar ready, and so the plumbing in the walls.
And so our cost is not be on the P P A.
That's already included in the contract.
Already included, and, and recall, we removed from the bid packet, the plate aisle of all those areas where the pipe was sold.
Yes.
Go.
Yeah. So as part of this R F P, you know, obviously, a solar purchase agreement would, would take into consideration thirty or thirty-five percent of the increasing number of what benefit they have buying it versus us, and then of course, charge that back with some sort of finance fee associated with, you know, holding our, our power cost at a constant. And so, which is all good, but we're already paying a premium for having a hundred percent sustainable energy to all our facilities, including the facility. So it's one of these things for evaluating, you know, I would, I would hope that maybe this, and maybe we can put it in this procurement policy that you have for the package, is that they would do that rate, that analysis for us as to what, we're paying five percent or more markup for having a hundred percent sustainable energy at, at the facility, at all facilities today, including the facility when it's completed, versus what this rate is going to be from a power purchase person.
Yeah, I was going to say, one of the goals or one of the measures on the benefit is going to be, what is our new power rate? And we can measure that against the, whatever the rate is at that time, for the, the minimum standard, I think it's fifty percent renewal versus a hundred percent.
Or a hundred percent.
That's what we're paying now. And so, but when we look at the comparison of what we pay per kilowatt hour of power, that's something that we are going to look, because what we're looking for is really what that net benefit is. And my understanding is, is that we're not going to be a hundred percent all of the time using the solar. I mean, we're going to have collection periods, draw periods, but we are likely going to have a small percentage of power that is drawn from the grid. Right? So we will maintain that choice on what we are paying for the grid drawn power, because that's the bill that we will pay for each unit, and we can choose at that time, are we going to, because this building is this way, are we going to stay a hundred percent renewal for that portion of the bill, or are we going to go to that order? That's certainly, that's part of the final analysis.
I just have one more, on the page five of ten of the background, on the second paragraph down, this project, I think there's floating wine in there.
That's supposed to be wine. Yeah, there's also another typo in the beginning part of that paragraph that says defer, differ this.
Defer, yes.
Yeah, so I appreciate the feedback.
Okay, we're reading it.
Yes.
Okay.
Really embarrassed.
Yes, okay, so do we need a, a, a motion or just off?
A motion, there's a, you already walked in. I think we're on track.
Yeah, we're a little.
Is there any public comment on this side? Okay, very done, I think we're back on track.
I just want to make a comment on this, because I, I have no objection to this, I think you do, but a bit of a forewarning, if this comes back, my view on this is, it's very important that we stay, so this ends up costing extra, you know, it's not something that we support.
I think the objective.
I mean, the objective is to reduce our energy.
I mean, almost, almost all, every one of the P P As that I've seen, the costs are less than they would be if you just had power. I don't know why else you'd do it, I mean, there might be another reason to do it, but that's the goal.
And again, we just have to go eyes wide open, I mean, because P P A providers may not want to do anything with us, so that's a thing too small.
And, and I think the information that we've gotten thus far is that there will be providers that are willing, we've contacted P C, met with their staff, and they've actually provided a list of folks that might be interested in this component of work. So with your authorization, we'll try and release that.
Can I get a motion?
I'm going to do it.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is number eighteen, which is review and discuss the status of the fire services fiscal review and provide.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This has been going on for a while, the recent, uh, subcommittee activity that we had, that the subcommittee went out, based on your last campaign, went out and sat down with, sat down with representatives from LAFCO.
He's still lying on you.
And that was LAFCO staff that talked through the issue of the opportunities in this more than the LAFCO process. The result of that was LAFCO wasn't LAFCO staff, was not all that in favor of this, they were for consolidation versus investment. So the suggestion was to return back to the city council for additional feedback and next steps from a policy perspective, and there are several, five or six policy options, and there may be others out there as well, that the council would consider, and these are, you know, initial public education engagement, moving forward with some kind of power modification with LAFCO, further conversations with the state or county, further conversations with the district itself, and in pursuit altogether or in combination with the city. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the subcommittee, Kerry and Tim Bill, providing additional information. Do you want to add?
I'll start first, since we've been talking a long time. I think that it's, it's something that LAFCO is clearly not used to, they're used to consolidation of services, and we clearly got that message from LAFCO. What we also would have to say is, you know, as this process has been going on for a period of time, even the report that we provided to them, you know, now to two thousand and fifteen report based on that, and here we are sitting here, based on data in the report. So it was a little confusing on their part, and because of the fact that we haven't actually given a direction of where we were going, there was maybe a perception on LAFCO's process that we were interested in, based on the report, the matrix report, of creating our own fire district. So they were already focused on the town, you know, opting to go out of the district and start our own fire department, which was not the message that we gave them by any means, but it was the perception that Martha P O's from LAFCO and her staff probably took based on the matrix report. The one thing that, that Martha had mentioned was that she had been considering doing a municipal service review of the entire county fire service component, and trying to say like county-wide consolidation component. You know, where that goes, I, we wouldn't be able to tell, but that would be in the county's interest of consolidation of services, based on the fact that there's been difficulty getting firefighter, firefighter management components, there's a lot of retirements that are occurring, and there's a lot of other jurisdictions, J P As and citizen planning services, which obviously makes sense. So we're kind of this anomaly and saying, hey, you know, ours is a little bit different because we're actually talking about the benefit of getting out of the district because our cost for service being so high. So I think that Martha gave us some generalized ideas of what the, our next steps is noted in the staff report. Bill, anything else you want to complement?
Well, my, my two cents from the, from the session was, you know, obviously, Martha did most of the talking, and from what she said, it was, and she and her associate, I, you know, they brought up, they said, well, I've never heard of any LAFCO, and I've contacted all LAFCOs around the state, and nobody has ever looked at anything like this. And we pointed out, said, well, you know, obviously, we said it as delicately as we could, but it was covered in the report, that, that actually, it has been reviewed by LAFCOs before, and that it was suggested that perhaps she contacted some of her colleagues in Orange County, where, where some conversations and perhaps continued conversations can go on. They did make it clear of the different steps that would be made, and, you know, obviously there's some more work to be done on our part, and, you know, she indicated that the matrix study only went so far, and she would want something to go a little bit further. And, you know, we acknowledged that there was just a finite limit of where we wanted them to go before we made any decisions, so, so it wasn't the most positive. So it was the most positive meeting that we've had with them, but at the same time, I think that there was, we understood their, their thought process. They had indicated that they had been speaking with members of the fire district, where they had had conversations with members of the fire district. And, but, you know, we understood where we were and that it was the first step, and it was more to get acquainted with the, with the road we're on and where we, we need to go. And I think that's pretty much my, did we miss anything, George? Any questions to say?
No.
I have any question?
Who is Martha?
Martha, the LAFCO representative or something.
For how many years now?
Like thirty.
I answered all my questions, you guys don't, is there any?
Yeah, we have one, one person.
Esteemed members of the council, I'd like to thank you for your service and the opportunity to address me. I would also like to thank you, thank you again, thank you for yourself. I would also like to take the time to introduce myself, Fire Services Speaker, President of the IED. My name is John Wurinder, if you do not know me, and that's entirely my fault. Some new firefighters call me captain, while others get confused and call me chief when I'm in our command car. However, most firefighters know me as either Johnny Boo, Wu Tang, JW, and sometimes even W. At times firefighters will paraphratically, even call me by things that should be mentioned in the town council meeting. I've been serving the community of Atherton for twenty-three years, as I was hired as a fire prevention specialist in nineteen ninety-six, and then as a firefighter in nineteen ninety-eight, of all the fire district commissions, which is to protect and preserve private property from the impact of fire disaster, fire disaster in community buildings. I'm very proud of my twenty-three years of service I have provided you, and if you ever make it down to my office at our human hall, you will see both full certification, recognition, right, condition, sorry. From various senators and assembly members, I voted both at state and federal level for the work that I have completed, both serving the citizens of Atherton. I am also both humbled and honored to represent the five hundred and twenty-three firefighters and transport paramedics that make up San Mateo County Fire Department as our president. collectively, our firefighters and transport paramedics provide service to virtually every corner of San Mateo County. Our mission is simple, and it's to work together to improve our communities and fire service in united effort, cultivate partnerships and consolidate. Our highly skilled and dedicated members provide for the protection, safety, and sustainable security of our members and the citizens that we are sworn to protect. We hold public trust paramount in our commitment to ensure the quality of life for all that we serve. I currently have either a direct relationship or an indirect relationship through my surrogates with nearly every elected officer or official that has jurisdiction over us. For the most part, these officials understand who we are, what we do, and why we do it. As members of the Atherton Town Council, we don't know who, the who, what, and why of our organization, and acknowledge that it's not your fault. As president, I am at fault for you not knowing us, and I hope to rectify this. We feel that the information that you are basing your decision off of relating to agenda item eighteen are incomplete, you have incomplete data. Just as we oppose Atherton's discussions to deceive from the. Based off of articles and reports that we read, we do not feel that you as elected officers and officials have been afforded all the tools that you're exposed. I would like to be afforded the opportunity to meet with you and provide you with an understanding of fire service in general, and specifically, the fire service in San Mateo County. I am, even my business card with your clerk involves that you are willing to meet with your firefighters to better understand our point of view prior to making any decisions relating to changing the fire TMS service delivery model in San Mateo.
Is there any other public comment?
No.
Any other council comments?
Goodly, Mayor, we do have a letter that we received from the resident, that is probably on everyone's desk, but I'd like to send that into public comments, and if you can give me a second or two to maybe paraphrase it, is that permitted? Okay, it's, it's from a resident, a Lindenwood resident, Bob Colito, longtime resident and involved citizen. So it, I'm not going to read every word, but paraphrasing, he acknowledges that, that Memorial Park Fire District is, as he says, one of the big winners from Proposition thirteen legislation enacted over forty years ago because of the formula that the property tax revenue is based from. And they're arguably one of the richest fire departments in the country, in the country, which actually should translate to invest equipment, training staff that you can buy, and obvious benefit to the residents they serve. However, in the case of Atherton, the cost benefit equation is seriously adequate. He goes on to talk about, you know, the reports in how much revenue is collected by the fire district. But he is challenging the council to further explore our options to address this use of taxpayer dollars and to make sure that we don't breach our fiduciary responsibility by not addressing this issue. Thinking that even if the small percentage of the muddies could be repurposed to benefit our residents, it would be worth pursuing. He just feels that a common sense solution could and should be reachable between the town and the district. And finds it hard to understand the fire district's steadfast resistance to any serious discussions. So he acknowledges that our residents are generally happy with fire services, there's no argument on there. But as the annual subsidies grow, at some point, we need to say that this enough. So he is recommending that this situation is so significant that public outreach and possibly even a referendum is in order to notify residents about this situation. And if the residents support that unlimited contributions of their tax dollars to our existing arrangement continues, so be it. But on the other hand, if the residents and the vote would indicate that we're nearing the point where our subsidies are no longer tolerable to the majority of Atherton residents, and the council has the mandate, we have the mandate to comfortable or reasonable candidates. And he says, regardless of how you see, you know, picking that further, that was a considerable option. And that's from Bob Colito, the resident, that's the only public, other public comment that I've received, so.
Any other comments from the council?
No, I, I just would like to say, we did make it clear, and there was a question in LAFCO, were we saying it was service related? And as we've stressed so many times before in United Report, there's, and Bob pointed this out too, there's not a question of the service, the quality of the service, the responsiveness of the service. The question is, is the, you know, the cost associated with the level of, the amount of service being provided here.
If I, if I could on that point, we all make that point, and it certainly happens, and nothing to do with the firefighters that are working here. But I don't understand how we are even able to make that statement, because that we're getting high quality of services, no issue about it. I'll tell you why, my understanding is that we have one fire last year of ancillary structure. And so it's, it's not the kind of thing where it's, it's happening frequently, we have separate ambulance service, we have our own cert, for, you know, if things get bad, we have to ramp in our, for a while. The, the volume in Atherton is just so small, that it's very difficult to say that we're getting a great service when the price for that service, their opportunity cost to pay thirteen point three, thirteen point five hundred dollars, whatever it is, is here for one backyard shed at that far. Now, I, I understand there's other things, but again, you know, there's no ambulance service we provide through this, there's no, you know, so it's, it's, it's a structural issue, it has nothing to do with the highly qualified personnel that are out there, but I, I am uncomfortable saying that we're getting some kind of great service, because we don't know that, the demand hasn't been there for that.
Well, let me say, because I don't think that we judge the quality of service by the number of structural fires. I, I think that there are people that have higher response needs that don't result in fires. I mean, I, I, in the twenty years I've lived in Atherton, I've had two of them. And the fire department were there within.
So my, my question would be, then again, that I thought we were looking into this, is, are you saying that, that you got a better response out of Memorial Park Fire District situation right now than you would have, as would, you had to look at other options to provide that response? I think the answer is you don't know. I mean, that's just the answer, we don't know, and we know that it probably would be a lot cheaper. You know, so I, the point is, again, it's a structural thing, I mean, we are, we being the residents of Atherton. But if you look at the property tax bill, you're paying a good chunk of money. And given this, the characteristics of our community, fire is not the highest risk that we face.
So go ahead, give it one.
No, I just, you know, the, the policy issues, there are six potential, you know, actions or recommendations that the Stafford Court laid down, and the sixth recommendation is like a combo, you know, it's like a catch-all, you know? It's A, B, C, or D, all of the above, or some of the above. And if you look at it, I think there's a lot of the above, and usually, further public education and education issues is important. I would love to continue further conversations with the county and or state legislatures in pursuit of some legislative action that could maybe adjust the inequity of it. And further conversation, I mean, I'd love to have further conversation with the fire district to pursue equity projects, as Mr. Colito alluded to, about, you know, other kind of projects that repurposed monies that we had in Atherton. I don't want to end pursuit of this issue, I think that that would be a wrong thing to do. I think we need to continue to try to find a reasonable and a responsible and a collaborative solution to this. And I just, I don't think, I think the action of his, of why approach this.
So I, I agree with Vice Mayor on several of her comments. I do believe it's, it's time that we do a little more public education and get more engagement on this item. Discussions with county and state legislators, I think, is, we need to start with that as well. We're open, I, I felt that we had had some fruitful discussions with the, with the fire district, and we understand their position, and made it very, very clear. So if there's something else for them to bring forward, we're open to have those discussions. I think we should always be open to having those discussions. But I do think that Martha had given us kind of a few steps forward, this is how we should look at it. You know, a detachment doesn't necessarily mean that we would not do work with the fire district, it just perhaps would be under a contract basis or on another basis, so. So I think that there, there are a number of things that we would need to start, and we should start, you know, with LAFCO discussion as well, which may spur further discussions with the fire district as well, so. My, my recommendation is to do item one, two, and three, our bullets one, two, and three, and the fire district, we're always open up to have further discussions with them, and we can always do four when they feel that they have something to discuss with us.
Very good. Yeah, I'm gonna have to echo Bill's comments, but I think that there's a little bit more. I think that there is some degree of urgency in the extent where we keep pushing this off, pushing this off. And for years, this council and the town has took on a very aggressive, the state of California has taken on an aggressive position related to police officers' retirements, this and that. And the fire district is no different, because they have the same responsibilities with retired officers that we have with police officers today. And every time I turn around, there's something in the district, either district controlled or not district controlled, city control, growth components that the district doesn't control, but these are all things that cause the district to react to local jurisdictions' growth components, that those components impact us, because we're a piece of that pie. And the longer we're in this relationship, the more of that pie we start to absorb. I just, in the last week, watched the newspaper, watching the growth come on with the city of Memorial Park, and there now was office space, which is going to cause an additional stress component to the district, known as one of the, you know, largest approved amount of space that's not including what is going on in the city of East Palo Alto. So then the district at this point is in negotiations to create a new fire station on Lower Row. With that is the acquisition of property, cost, acquisition of equipment, cost, acquisition of firefighters, cost. All these things, as we keep sitting here watching the district blow up, we watch and say, gosh, we don't know what we want to do. Actually, we need to know what we want to do, and we need our residents to have an opportunity to get to the point where we're in a position, because if we sit here with our hands underneath our asses, we're gonna be there in another twelve months saying the same thing, but with more exposure by a million. So, you know, whether or not, we're reacting to things that we can't control. And for our residents' sake, we should give them an opportunity to say, you know, there may be other options here, we can't get to a point making those decisions, or exploring an option of if it is out of the district. Not to say that creating a fire department would be something, but let's say that option, because we haven't discussed it as a council, but the variations of it, or contract services, or contracts, this is how it's with the district itself after we're out of the district, and saying, we want to pay for services, but let's make that cost reasonable, let's do a bidding process to where it is, to gain the interest in it. And if not, then we are where we are, and we know what the costs for services are, but at least we'll have the ability to have more control. We're trying not to be absolutely uncontrolled. So I am interested in moving forward with the steps that Councilman Whitmer has mentioned, and I think that there would be improvement for us to, again, I think the education component is a very important component, but I do think that there is a degree of urgency in the sense we've been doing this for how many years to get to where we are. So that's my shift.
My shift, but it feels like we, I, I believe most councils are just convinced of sort of the merits of our position. And for me, the, the remaining question is, are we able to do anything about it? Which is, I think, and I, it's very frustrating as Americans sit down and be told that, you know, no, you've got no recourse, you're gonna have to get through what you're doing, like, and that's what we're being told by people, and, you know, I, I personally encourage exploring all our options, because what we're, the current situation is about trajectory to get worse, and it's not serving our residents well. At some point in the future, we may have to take stock and say, look, actually, it's impossible, we try to, it's just not gonna work. But I am convinced there's an inequity, and I'm convinced that. inequity, and I'm convinced that the power structures that are out there are not designed to us, because they don't have to. They don't even have no option but to continue to pay more than they're escaping to term services. So anyway, I, I would be in favor of pursuing all our options, but continuing to evaluate, you know, if someone realizes we're, currently able to do this at all.
Well, I think I'm at a different position than the rest of you. I think that we actually do have an inequitable situation, and I think we've had to deal with that situation, and we've raised it against a stone wall. And that's because the fire district doesn't have to respond to this on that. I think there could have been solutions, just as Bob Toledo suggests, and he can't believe that we have a kind of solutions. I think that we've attempted to kind of solutions, but we haven't. I've gotten many contacts from members of our town, residents of our town, whose perspective and concern is the same as has been expressed by Bob Toledo. He expresses it maybe a little stronger, but it's very common that I've heard. Equal in common, or maybe even more common, is, is a feeling that we have very good services from the fire district, and, and that's my experience. I agree that, you know, there isn't a point of comparison, because we haven't had an alternative, either, frankly, I don't have a perspective on how it might have been different in any of the other living arrangements I've had in my life, because I haven't ever had a fire and had a terrible experience with fire services. But in this example, my experience has always been exceptional. So I, and, and I've heard that from many residents. I hear what everybody else says. I think that there's nothing we can do about it. I also think there's nothing we can do about all kinds of tax structures, and this is a tax structure. Now, maybe we have a little more control over this tax structure, because it's local, but in fact, we're part of a special district, and it's, and, and what ended up happening in terms of the tax allocations are something out of our control. And, you know, I hear comments about how this fire district is the richest in the nation, and how funds are used in non-provenant ways. It's not our issue. It's the fireworks issue connected to that. And that doesn't say we can't, as residents of this district, get comment on that, we can and should, but it's not our governing issue. What our governing issue is to represent our residents, and to the extent that we have concerns about what has been characterized as the equity issue, I think it's appropriate to look at it, to try to rectify it as best we can, and I honestly think we've done that. I'm not opposed to the idea of polling the residents. If we want to go out with an advisory vote and let the residents decide, I, I would be shocked if it's anything more than a one-third, two-third decision, because I think that the residents support the fire district and wouldn't be interested in a change, and the risks that any change might present to them. And in fact, it's not like there's a big tax benefit that's gonna come to happen. I mean, I know this thing started with Peter Carpenter claiming that we were trying to steal tax dollars from the fire district, which is, which we all said at the time and continues to be utterly absurd, because not only was it not true, we couldn't do it if we wanted to. If, in fact, there is a change, and right now, we are paying eight, our residents are paying, according to the staff, reported eight million dollars a year more than the cost of providing the services to the taxes that they pay for. But even if there were a change, and we were to do our own fire department, or we were to join Cal Fire or Rapid City Fire, assuming the LAFCO would support that, which I don't believe they would, then that discrepancy, whatever it might be, if it were eight million dollars, it would go to the county. Atherton would get its eight point five percent of that. It's just, and is it worth that effort when we've got all of our work cut out in front of us in terms of the civic center? It's not where I think we should spend money. So I'm okay, I, I feel perfectly fine in either doing a poll or a formal advisory vote to get direction from our residents, as Bob Toledo suggests. I, I have no problem with that, but I don't think we should spend money to go pursue a bridge to nowhere with that.
I'd like a rebuttal.
Yeah. So discussion with the legislature, I think, is, is something that might be something, although we're kind of in a situation in this coming year.
Without current legislature.
Yes. But I think that that's worth a continued discussion, and, you know, the fire district, until there is some sort of filing with LAFCO, they're, they're no obligation to, to do anything. I think if we were to progress, you know, that, that may change, it may not, but I think that we would be, it would be worthwhile to continue to progress, because I agree with everything that Kerry said. Every day goes on. There's more and more expenditures, the pension liabilities are go higher and higher, and I think we need to work a, a little bit more aggressively on trying to, to a timetable to try and get things done. Is the LAFCO process a long process? Yes, it is. Part of it is engaging the public. So I think that one and two actually are intertwined, but I do believe, I'm not, I'm not interested in doing a survey. Surveys, you might get one percent back. That's not representative of the town. So I do believe, I do believe that, you know, a push again, I think that we should continue with one, two, and three. The fire district has some comments they'd like to come back with on some other equity items. That would be great to hear, and we can bring those back to the council, but at the same time, I think we need to continue to move forward and not end this pursuit. I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that we have a lot on our plate, but this is something I think that is worth pursuing.
Well, yeah. Mr. Mayor, I, you make compelling pragmatic, because truly, it does appear as if we're tilting at windmills if we expect to bring our costs in line and revenue in line with the expectation that the over, overpayments would somehow magically come back into our coffers, because you're right, it, it wouldn't. It would go to the county, and then it would be spread around to, you know, county.
Schools.
Schools, right?
Everybody sort of, you should think so, but what?
But most of it, most of it goes to schools, everything. But it just, that's why I, and that we need more public input on this, because I talk to people all the time, and they, they look at their tax bill, and they go, you know, this seems really out of whack here, you know, what can you do? Well, what, what can you do? And that is something that I have a hard time sitting with, that there's nothing that we can do. Like Councilmember Lunters was saying, it just doesn't seem right. We shouldn't do. And since we haven't had any progress with really coming cooperatively with the fire district leadership, membership, and, and were to come to some other kind of equity sharing projects, I, I think we have to pursue the, the education of the people, get the will of the people. I still have, I can hear your argument about completing the application to LAFCO, because at that point, you think that we have maybe some leverage in discussing some things with the fire district that we don't have now, because, you know, what, why should they discuss anything with this? So it is a complex issue, but I, I still am in favor of, I'm in one, I'm in three, and I'm in four, to try to see if we can really push through and make some headway on this.
So I will say, I agree that this is like treading on a ladder that will never end. I'm not gonna disagree. But somebody's gotta fight for our residents, and we're the ones that have the most knowledge or the willingness, have shown willingness to even look into this issue over so many years. Previous councils have had interest in this, but it is very discouraging when you hit a wall. And I think that, that, that is a level of frustration, and there's absolute frustration probably in everyone of us up here, because we would think that this process should be a simple process, and we should be able to work together to come up with a compromise that would be best benefit for the great payers of the district, the taxpayers of Atherton and contribute to the district. But nobody's doing it, and we've been fighting this little toll for such a period of time that just to get information is a bit of struggle. And now we're going into a new phase of struggle where there's still this arbitrary wall of even trying to get information out of the district. There's no willingness on the district's part to really sit down and be partners with us in saying, hey, let's come up with a compromise, because they can't do that, because they represent a district with four different jurisdictions, including counties, Palo Alto, and just because you want any people in Atherton to think that you've got something unfair, we've determined it's unfair. The services are good, but they don't meet what the costs for our services are. And we have no idea what the end of the road expectation would be from another jurisdiction that, or anybody. To me, competitive are, they don't have to be competitive. They can charge the highest rate and say, stick it, and do what you want. They don't have to. Well, maybe if they had some competition, just like everybody else has to do with fire engines, or police cars, or this and that, maybe the bidder first of the services that they do provide, which they have knowledge of, but don't want to tell us. But they would have the knowledge and say, gosh, you know, we really don't do a lot of work in Atherton, and therefore, and we're pretty consistent with not a lot of work. So therefore, it's a pretty big bonus to get ten, twelve, whatever millions of dollars to do, not a whole lot. So I think it's unfair to our residents to say, we were a leadership that represents the town, that fight, we've been in this for ever, but we've been really focused on the cost of services, the cost of our civic center, the cost of our police department, the cost of our retirement. We really drill down on that. This is another issue where we've absorbed the cost, we can see that there's an inequitable issue. And we're the only leadership of the town, some of the members of the town don't even have the idea that we're not representing the fire department that we're responsible for. So I mean, there's an education curve that even they don't get. Right? So, again, I think that for some of our residents, they're glad that we are taking on the, the process. It is an ugly process, it's not a fun process, I don't like it. I like firefighters, I like police officers, et cetera, et cetera. But this is not about liking them or not. It's about equity treatment of the cost of the services that we get.
But the question is, is that what our residents want? So let's put it, let's do an advisory vote on the next ballot. Let's put an advisory vote. Let people vote on it.
Why don't we figure out what our options are first? See, here's what, we are all making a bunch of assumptions here.
Sure.
And I don't think we yet know, and I, I think part of the purpose of this conversation is, are we gonna go to the next step and see what our options are?
And what that would cost.
And what that would cost.
Sure.
I think that's all, it's like, for me, at least, that's the question, is are we willing to go to the next step? Because, like, for example, what is options completing, I think? Completion of a formal application for protection parties with LAFCO. I have no idea. That sounds like it might be very expensive. I have to be a little bit, you know, what, that's gonna be very expensive, I'm frightened, that ultimately we decide to have to. I don't know. But I don't wanna make an assumption now that it's too, that's incredibly expensive. I actually don't agree with your assumption about how people will vote on this. You know, I think there'd be a hard campaign, but once people understood, I, I, I actually think you, you might have the number for us.
And believe you had to take direction.
Yeah. So, you know, the first thing, we need to understand the options, and, and we are jumping to assumptions. Many of us are under warranty, even about where the money goes, we just don't know, right? We know through this process recently enough to say that we really know how it's gonna play out. So what I'd like to see us do is, is continue to push the ball forward and reevaluate if we're out, because we learn more things. We didn't make any dramatic decisions today.
Well, could we have staff give us an estimate on what the cost would be to, that's what I kind of wrote out, based on feedback. This evening was bullet number one, return of the education proposal, what the cost would be, what the timing would be, just an estimate of that, to hear what that would be. Bullet number two, developing a fire to LAFCO process, return of the estimate of cost, what that timeline looks like, et cetera, where we can get from LAFCO to help us come up with those. Bullet number three was favored as well, setting up contact with the county and state. I think that's something we can do without the cost. My question is, who other council would you like to assist with that, the current fire services committee, or some other sub-community council? And then option, number four, bullet number four, is certainly leaving the door open for further conversation with the fire district.
Question about number three, the further conversation with county and our state legislators. Could individual council members reach out to, you know, the people that they know independently, or would that be its roles?
That's fine, if you're talking to publicly, publicly around.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
Just you won't, though. If you talk to one, he talks to the same one, and he talks to the same one.
Well, of course, we're all gonna talk to the same one.
Just, just to remind you, when this issue first came up about two years ago, at the direction of the council, I talked to Jerry Hill, and he told me it would take the action of the state legislature, and there's absolutely no way that the state legislature is doing anything like this to address an equity issue for Atherton.
Well, I spoke to him today, actually, and I mentioned, and he indicated that he would love for we to come back and talk to him, because I assumed that he would carry it myself, but he obviously stepped, and, and update him on where we are, and, and have another conversation. And, you know, I've had the conversations much more, and I've been, and I've been more participating with that. And as I mentioned in my little comments, you know, we did have some discussion with Anna Schill, and we got her, some of her feedback as well, so.
And say Anna would be very, very supportive of this.
She was.
I'm not sure we would need to frame this with certain other legislature, as, as a, of this, of course, as an Atherton issue. I mean, it's been forty-plus years since this, since the post-PROF-13 allocation of tax resources went out there. There are probably equities going on throughout the state, and it may well be that we'd be well-served to identify other communities that are being harmed, and, and see if there's a, you know, a commonality that brings people together.
Well, I think we would need to get part of the charter of the subcommittee to go talk to our legislators in pursuit of the council. I think that following up on your conversation today would be a great.
I agree. I'm, I'm supportive.
Ed Gooley at Upton Road, Chris had a meeting of community with the Assembly in Bourbon. And this issue was, so we actually brought it up during that meeting.
That was for his election.
Oh, yes, yes. Yes. For another meeting in terms of what his perspective was on. And he was keenly interested in what was mentioned about the return of aid surpluses going back to the county schools and other agencies as a proper team report. I think that's fair on that issue. So let's move to item nineteen, which is a report on the civic center.
Uh, thank you, Perry, for the comments. For the purely information, the whole presentation within the documents, there was no action, community.
Any comment on this item? Is there any cuddles on this side?
No, I just would like to know, because the grant, you're, it's done, you've been asked yourself, Martin, you wrote out an email and stuff. or Martin put out an email and so...
We'll take it, we'll get it, because it's a...
The grant.
Grant.
Oh.
The lockup.
Are they going to stand, they're going to lock up on the 93rd, and it was supposed to be done in December, if you know, whether to cooperate or something a little bit, Carol can, that year in December, I think you can have some inspections on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any public comment, end of meeting, public comment?
Just the closing ones?
Yeah.
Yeah. While you sleep, living with, listening to you, a fire issue. This is already not automatic, but I recommend you put Polito's letter in the record.
It will be done. Yes.
Just your comments on it. I don't appreciate that, great, but the letter itself speaks for itself.
There's copies over here.
It is being... Thank you, Laura. Thank you all.
I will make a final comment. This is an overall issue with Proposition 13. And we know, we read the headlines and all that, that I believe that we, as Mike said, we need to find some other supporters of the state. Forty years, you're never looking at that issue again. It's, it's bad. I'm sorry.
You know, we...
There's a council report, item, listed, that it should be...
It should be. I'd love to make a report. I'm going to hand down a council report.
Oh, wow. We can hack into that.
Well, I'm, what I'm, yeah, what I'm doing is passing down, this is not my work, this is the work of our congressional, uh, representatives, Congressman Jimmy Panetta from the Sound Standard Committee, from Anna Esch, within our district, and Jackie Spear. They have put together eight, eight points of their House of Recommendations, like legislative, having to do with aviation legislation. And if you read it, and, like, the first one is called the REST Act, which will restore everyone's sleep tonight, R-E-S-T. Okay? So, you really need to read these eight points, and these are going to be fleshed out into House bills that will go to the Congress to, and to be passed over the next few months. On Saturday at 11 o'clock, there's going to be a press conference in San Francisco, the head, Council of South Francisco, Council Member Mayor, Rich Gavarino's house, because he is under the direct flight cap of departures, and they've asked me, as the chair of the roundtable, to come and speak along with the three congressional representatives. So, it will be televised, and, but this was presented to the roundtable last week, and the residents in, who had been yelling and screaming at us about all this, they felt, I said, this is like an early Christmas present. So, it was only an act in Congress, and maybe the FAA changed their flight paths. The other thing I wanted to make a little report about was SB 50. Has this, did you meet with Weiner? Okay, sure. All right. Okay. So, at CK, CK, as you know, is the City-County Association of Governments, and they have a lobbyist firm of Shaw Yoder and Tweed, and they were there, and they were giving us an update about it. On January 6th, Weiner's bill is going to be rebirthed into this next year, and they're having a press conference with lobbyists and Weiner. And the gist of it, there was no text, but the gist of it is that what he's done is tweaked the bill to make it more transitional, to give cities some guidelines under which they can work through developing and achieving their housing numbers over, over years before it becomes a mandated deal. Yeah, there you go. So, we're, of course, Shaw Yoder is representing San Antonio County as a whole, and we are pushing back very, very hard on the SB 50 to maintain our local control, our local zoning, laws, and our, you know, general high agriculture. And so, that's the way this is. But, you know, stay tuned, because it's going to be unveiled in the first week of January, which, when the session of the legislature, of the, the game, the games, radio games, radio games. And that's it?
Good. On that issue, council trades, the state of California for our support, right?
Yes.
So, there's labor support goes seriously. Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, word adjourned.
Nice.